Okay, it's eighteen hundred hours and I'm going to call the meeting to order, please. Welcome to the Monday, February tenth, meeting of this City of St. John Common Council. And every week we start our meetings with a land acknowledgement. And this evening I'm passing that over to the deputy to read for us.
Thank you, Your Worship. The land in which the City of St. John or Mennequist is situated is a traditional territory of the Wollasteweeque. The Wollasteweeque, along with their indigenous neighbors, Amigma and Pesca Tamaquadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen hundreds that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let us pause and reflect.
Okay, I'll ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. Okay, City Clerk, next item, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda is item two point one, approval of January twenty-seventh minutes.
Approval of January twenty-seven minutes. The deputy and councillor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, next item.
Next is approval of the agenda, and there are a number of additions, and I'll just list those off. First, there is a bylaw that was circulated to council nine point three with French translation, the original, and your kid only had English. Nine point three as well, there is citizen correspondence that we've received over the weekend that's been forwarded to council with respect to the public hearing. Also, there's item seventeen point one from Committee of the Whole filing of counterclaim in court. Seventeen point two from Committee of the Whole of recommendation with respect to real estate acquisition and disposition policy and enhanced GIS tool. Seventeen point three, a recommendation from Committee of the Whole with respect to sale of three-two-four Charlotte. And seventeen point four is staff, Committee of the Whole recommendation with respect to acquisition of easement for municipal services on Milledge Avenue.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve the agenda. The deputy and councillor Redwan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, next item.
Next is item four, disclosures of conflict of interest, if we have any.
Conflict of interest? Councillor Sullivan?
I think seventeen four.
Seventeen four, the easement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, not seeing any other conflicts of interest, moving on, next item.
Next is number five, consent agenda.
Deputy, can you read the consent agenda for us, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move five point one through to five point five, please.
Take a second, or councillor Sullivan on the question. Councillor Redwan, over to you for the question.
Just have a quick comment, Mayor. The public may want to take a look at five point five, the annual workforce report. Has a lot of information about staff and some really good information starts on page thirty-six.
Thank you, councillor, it does have a lot of information and well worth reading. Thank you. Okay, I have the motion on the floor on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, next item.
Next is item number six, members' comments.
Members' comments. Councillor Ogden, over to you.
This past weekend, we lost a real leader in this community, David McPherson. He taught together and coached together for a long time. He was probably the number one track star for a long time, and he's known as Mr. Rugby in St. John. And he was just in excellent shape, and it just happened, I got a call in the middle of the night. And anyway, he and his wife are my oldest son's godparents, and he was a very good friend of mine. He was a great athlete, great teacher, good friend, always rely on him. He basically built the modern day rugby, including the new clubhouse. And I just wish to send Sue and Jess and all his family the very best. It's a big loss, I was just with them the other day. Anyway, it's a tremendous loss to the community. And his legacy will live long, but I just want to pay tribute to my friend, David. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, you're right about his legacy living long because he was also a high school guidance councillor. And there were so many kids that met Dave. And I know him well myself, and I know his daughter and his wife, and it's a huge, huge loss, a huge shocking loss. And I will add our condolences on with yours, thank you very much for bringing that forward. Councillor Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Champlain Heights Association's meeting is tomorrow evening at the Champlain Heights Elementary School at seven PM. They're expecting Sergeant Jeremy Edwards, a community police officer, to come to chat with the community. And the Chamber Mixer is taking place on February the twentieth at Clifton Manor from four to six PM at sixty-two Parks Manor. And just in the spirit of Black History Month, I took a look and I was reading up on some history and for our New Brunswick community and found that one of the founding members of what was called at the time, the New Brunswick Association for Advancement of Colored People, was Frederick Hodges. He actually also held the distinction of being NB Federation of Labor's first black officer, police officer. And he was actually part of the St. John Police Force, so, and he was also the City of St. John's first visible minority in city councillor? Yeah, in city councillor, that's right. And so I just wanted to share that, I thought that was interesting. And I also need to say, he probably is wishing that we kind of sneak by without saying it, but tonight is Mark Reed's last council meeting. And thank you so much for your service to the city, it's been very valuable, the information that you've given to me, I know, over the last four years, so, thank you and we wish you all the best.
Definitely. Councillor Harris, I think your hand is up over there, is it? Okay.
Yes, yes, Mayor, thanks so much. Yeah, I have to add my condolences to the family of David McPherson as well. As a rugby kid coming out of Mount A, on a number of, had the opportunity to play on a number of winning seasons at Mount A, it was my first time coming to the city, getting work from down home in Charlotte County. Dave was one of the first guys I met with, along with Chris Berry and Chad Suley and a few others that many would know. And Dave was an excellent coach. It was really hard not to fall in love with the team because of Dave's involvement. And so, yeah, it's a big loss, quite a shocking loss. I was just working on the clubhouse with them literally before Christmas, so, sometime in November there, so, anyway, big loss.
Thank you, councillor. Is that it for comments? Yep, okay. Councillor Stewart, you had a comment?
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't know how many people follow online, so when we get a council chamber that's still, I'd like to take an opportunity just to remind everyone that Pro Kids has a deadline for their spring applications, February fifteenth, so next week. So if you're a family that needs to take advantage of getting your child involved in sports, recreation, arts, entertainment, anything, Pro Kids, get your applications in. But also, while we have a packed house, a lot of members from JDI here too, I see, if you're able to donate to Pro Kids, it's a very, very worthy cause because it does help literally thousands of children participate in sports and, like I say, other recreational facility or recreational activities that otherwise they may not have a chance. So if you do have a chance to support them, take advantage of that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, that's excellent. Okay, City Clerk, that's it, next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda is a proclamation, it's item seven point one, and this is National Two-One-One Day, February eleventh.
Thank you. Whereas Two-One-One NB is a vital resource for New Brunswick residents, offering access to information and referrals for a wide range of government, health, community, and social services in their local areas. And whereas residents of the City of St. John can reach out to Two-One-One for free confidential referrals to essential community and social services, and whereas this service is available twenty-four seven in over one hundred and fifty languages by phone, it can also be accessed online at nb dot two-one-one dot C A, through the Two-One-One Canada app via chat or email. And whereas every year on February the eleventh, United Ways and Two-One-One organizations across Canada celebrate National Two-One-One Day. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Donan O'Drean of St. John, do hereby proclaim February the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, as National Two-One-One Day in the City of St. John. Next item, City Clerk?
Thank you. Next will be the consideration of bylaws. We're not quite six-thirty yet, so we need to skip over the public hearings. So the first under the bylaws is item ten point one, and it's a bylaw respecting outdoor fires within the City of St. John, and it's on your agenda for third reading tonight.
Chief Nichol, I'll send that over to you for a quick intro.
Your Worship and members of council, before you this evening is a bylaw regulating outdoor fires in the City of St. John. It's recommended that common council give third reading to this bylaw. For background, the city currently has fire safety guidelines, but no bylaw that regulates outdoor fires or the adherence to the provincial forest fire watch, no burn periods. Adoption of this bylaw formalizes what has been achieved through the guidelines, adding enforceability and a requirement to adhere to the provincial forest fire watch, no burn periods or times. A draft of this bylaw was presented to the Public Safety Committee in the summer of twenty-twenty-four, and feedback was received. The GCO's office worked with the Fire Prevention Division to incorporate the feedback received into the final version before you this evening. Again, it's recommended that common council give third reading to the bylaw.
Thank you, Chief. City Clerk, over to you for the two motions.
Thank you. In this case, two motions are required. The first motion would be to approve third reading in its, or by summary in this case, it's quite a lengthy one, so it can be done in summary if there's no objection. And second motion would be to approve third reading by title.
Okay, approve. Deputy and councillor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And this bylaw is entitled a bylaw respecting outdoor fires within the City of St. John, and in the summary of the bylaw is, the City of St. John has outdoor fire safety guidelines, but no bylaw which regulates outdoor fires or adherence to the provincial forest fire watch, no burn periods. The intent of the proposed outdoor fire bylaw is to regulate the use of outdoor fireplaces on public and private property, only permitting fires on days or times where such fires are permitted in accordance with the province's forest fire watch.
Thank you, okay, I'll take a motion to approve reading by title. Councillor Darling and councillor Redwan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And the title is a bylaw respecting outdoor fires within the City of St. John.
Next item, City Clerk?
And next is item two point one on your agenda, and this is zoning bylaw amendments for application fee refund, third reading.
Okay, for this one, I'm sending this one over to Commissioner Pofenroff for a quick intro.
Thank you, Your Worship and members of council. Before you this evening for third reading is a text amendment to the zoning bylaw that was initiated by city staff. The text amendment will enable staff to issue refunds for planning applications based on a set of criteria. This will streamline the refund process and enable refunds to be issued without the approval of common council. The application received first and second reading on January twenty-seventh, following the required public hearing, and I can now confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met, and the item is now before you to move forward with third reading, thank you.
Okay, City Clerk, over to you for the two motions we need.
Two motions needed for this, approval of third reading in its entirety, and second motion is approval by title.
Councillor Killen and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John. The zoning bylaw of the City of St. John enacted on the fifteenth day of December twenty-fourteen is amended by, one, adding immediately after paragraph two point ten C the following, when an applicant withdraws or cancels an application made to council or the advisory committee pursuant to sections five-three-two D, five, fifty-three-two I, fifty-three-four, fifty-five-one A, fifty-five-two, fifty-nine-sixty, sixty-one-one, and sixty-one-three, or one-seventeen of the Community Planning Act, prior to public notice being issued, sixty percent of the fee identified in Schedule B shall be refunded to the applicant. No refund will be provided for an application that is canceled or withdrawn after the public notice has been issued. E, when an applicant withdraws or cancels an application made to the development officer pursuant to sections fifty-three-two-one, fifty-three-seven, fifty-three-eight, fifty-five-two, or one-oh-eight of the Community Planning Act, or a request for a zoning confirmation letter under this bylaw, prior to the development officer rendering a decision, sixty percent of the fee identified in Schedule B shall be refunded to the applicant. No refund will be provided for an application canceled or withdrawn after the development officer has rendered a decision. Two, deleting paragraph two point one-three E and replacing it with the following, E, when an applicant withdraws or cancels an application to amend the zoning bylaw or resolution of council or agreement pursuant to section fifty-nine of the Community Planning Act, prior to the public notice being issued, sixty percent of the fee identified in Schedule B shall be refunded to the applicant. No refund will be provided for an application that is canceled or withdrawn after public notice has been issued. And F, notwithstanding paragraph two point ten E, council may return all or any part of the fee associated with applications identified in paragraph A to the applicant.
Thank you, City Clerk, so I'll take a motion to approve third reading by title. Deputy, councillor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John.
Okay, City Clerk, next item.
Next is item twelve point one, and it's an update from the chief administrative officer on select catalytic projects and advocacy.
Sending this over to you, CAO, we just heard this from you, I think, a couple of weeks ago, so this should be short.
You're correct, they'll be very brief this evening, Your Worship. Just provide an update on a couple of items with respect to the new schools, the new South End School is now out for tender, I understand, by the province with construction expected to begin this spring. And for the North End School, the building permit was actually submitted to our office last week, and so they remain on track to start construction this spring as well. In terms of affordable housing catalytic project update, the city team continues to advance council's priority on affordable housing. The intake for the Housing Accelerator Fund grant program is now closed until further notice, and the city is reviewing the Housing Accelerator Fund grant awards, and applicants will be notified as soon as we wrap up that process. And lastly, our performance dashboard has been updated reflecting the latest information on our Housing Accelerator Fund metrics, and that's on the city website, and it's current as of February first, just over a week ago. That concludes the update, Your Worship, unless there are any questions.
Okay, excellent. Not seeing any questions, I'll take a motion, oh, I'll take a motion to receive for information. Councillor Sullivan and councillor Stewart on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk?
Next item is under fifteen, general correspondence, so the first one would be fifteen point one, National Farmers Union Letter of Introduction, and there's a recommendation to receive this for information.
Councillor Sullivan and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Read this, public, this is a good one, it's about food sovereignty and your firms and feeding yourself. Next item, City Clerk?
Next is fifteen-two, Request for Proclamation for World Hemophilia Day. Recommendation is to refer to the clerk's office to prepare the proclamation.
Deputy and councillor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk?
Next is fifteen-three. It's a submission with respect to Industrial Inquiry Commission Reviewing Canada Post. There's a recommendation to receive this for information.
Receive for information, councillor Sullivan and councillor Darling on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, next item?
Next is fifteen point four, A Letter with Respect to Improving Public Transit to St. John Airport. There's a staff recommendation to refer this matter to the Transit Commission for review and consideration.
Refer to Transit, councillor Stewart is referring it, and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. There are three councillors that sit on the Transit Commission, so this will definitely get addressed, thank you councillors. Next item, City Clerk?
Next is fifteen-five, and it's another letter from the public, a new public bus stop, recommendation refer to St. John Transit Commission.
Referring to Transit Commission. The deputy, councillor Lowe on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
Next are the items that would have come from Committee of the Whole, and the first of those would be seventeen point one, and this is with respect to filing of counterclaim in court, file number SJC five-three-eight-two-oh-two-four. And the recommendation for council's consideration is that the city file a counterclaim in the matter of Deble Enterprises Limited versus the City of St. John.
Okay, councillor Norton and councillor Sullivan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk?
Next is seventeen point two, and this is the Committee of the Whole recommendation with respect to real estate acquisition and disposition policy and enhanced GIS tool, Housing Accelerator Fund. And there's a recommendation from the Growth Committee that, to council, to adopt the policy statement that's contained in the report.
Okay, I'll take a, councillor Redwan and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk?
Next is item seventeen point three from Committee of the Whole, and this is with respect to sale at three-two-four Charlotte Street, AKA Vulcan Street. And the council resolution would be that the city enter into a purchase and sale with J N LaFord Realty, Inc., generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on February tenth, for the sale of the property located at three-two-four Charlotte Street, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said agreement, a purchase and sale, and any other documents necessary to facilitate the transaction, and that the net proceeds received by the city in relation to the above transaction be deposited into the General Capital Reserve.
Take a mover and a second, or councillor Redwan and councillor Killen on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, next item?
And next is the Committee of the Whole recommendation, item seventeen point four, with respect to acquisition of easement for municipal services at ten forty-one to ten forty-three Milledge Avenue, R K Y C. Recommendation is that the city enter into an easement agreement, and the form is generally attached to this M and C with Royal Kennebecase's Yacht Club for the acquisition of an easement for municipal services over and along property identified as ten forty-one to ten forty-three Milledge Avenue, and that the city pay up to a maximum of one thousand dollars plus HST and disbursements of the R K Y C's legal cost to finalize the easement transaction, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said easement agreement and any other documents necessary to affect the transaction.
Councillor Darling, councillor Killen on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk? Is that it?
Those are all the items, Your Worship, except for the public hearing.
Okay, so the public hearing, well, the first one will start at number nine, one will start at six-thirty, we can't start before that because that's the, that's the law, that's when we said they'll start, so we've got about six, five or six minutes probably there, and, so let's have a five-minute recess, okay? I need a motion. Councillor Sullivan and councillor Stewart on the question, all in favor? Perfect. Okay.
Okay, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Oh, that's what I need. Where's my gavel? I'm going to call the meeting back to order, please. So we are going to start the public hearings at 6:30, and it is 18:30 right now. What I'll say quickly is, there are two public hearings, and both of them were fairly lengthy at PAC. I think you were there quite late, Brad. I've got the chair here with us from PAC. So if you would like to have a seat, if you're here for the first one, stay. And if you would like to, you can, if you want a seat, you can, we have seating out in the outside there. And we have the TVs all set up, so you can watch it out there, and you can have a seat out there. But we're going to proceed first, the first one is Sunnyside Avenue, so that'll be the first one up. And, all right, so I'm going to, hang on, I gotta get my notes over here.
So for this one, first, I'm going to send it over to the clerk, and he's going to tell us the next item. City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the public hearings are now beginning at 6:30. And the first item on the agenda is 9.1, and this is a proposed municipal plan and zoning bylaw amendment with a planning advisory report and staff presentation regarding Sunnyside Avenue.
Yeah, sending this over to Commissioner Pofenroff for the introduction, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. This evening's first public hearing is for a municipal plan amendment and rezoning amendment that was submitted by the United Way Maritimes for a number of properties located at 0.0 Sunnyside Avenue, 288 West Moreland Road, and a portion of 304 West Moreland Road. The application will permit the development of an affordable mini-home park with 75 individual housing units and a community building. The application has been evaluated by staff and the Planning Advisory Committee, and included in your package is the recommendation to amend the municipal plan and rezone the property. I'll now turn it over to Eva Matson, the planner on the file, for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Eva, over to you.
Thank you, and good evening. So as introduced before you is a proposal for a municipal plan amendment and a rezoning for a 4.67 hectare area of undeveloped land on Sunnyside Avenue, which is just off of West Moreland Road, to create an affordable mini-home park. So the application has two components. That first part is the municipal plan amendment, to redesignate it from park and natural area to stable area on Schedule A, and then to stable residential on Schedule B. And then the second part of the application is to rezone it from park to mini-home park residential. And this would allow for the creation of a mini-home park with 75 units, associated driveway, access landscaping, and community spaces. And you can see the concept on the screen here. This proposal includes 52 PIDs, as listed on the screen. I won't read them all out to you. And this area was previously subdivided for individual residential properties along the undeveloped Sunnyside Avenue. There is an application being processed as well for a stop-up and close for a portion of Sunnyside Avenue to be acquired by the developer and form part of the development site. And then the remaining road portion would remain public road from West Moreland Road to access the subject site and other existing lots such as the cemetery. The area is on the east side of the city, just off of West Moreland Road, with Fernhill Cemetery to the southwest, and then East Point Shopping Center to the northeast of the site. It does back onto sites that border Rossay Road, but due to that elevation change between the two roads, there wouldn't be any access from Rossay. This area is well-serviced by municipal transit routes and sidewalks for active transportation. Here's a closer look at the site using an aerial image. You can see the image, the area is largely covered in trees and bush, and the site would largely be developed at the rear with the access just after that turn to the power station there. For further context, here are some site photos. The first one, that small one on the left, is looking up Sunnyside from West Moreland. The larger picture on the right shows that a little closer. And this would be part that would remain public, right up to about that first telephone pole with the stop-up and close starting after that. And then the small image on the very left is just at the top of the Sunnyside Avenue, right where the road starts to branch towards the cell tower to the right, and then it would go on to the power station, and a new access would be created to the left. The first image in this site, or in this one, is of the site. It is over a little bit of a dip. You can see where kind of there's an elevation change after you crest Sunnyside Avenue, so this project would not be visible from West Moreland. The top image is just another image of the access to the power station, which would remain and kind of act as the edge of the site. And then the last image is just showing that elevation change again. And a final image here is from the Rossay Road side, and the site would be up in that tree area. And with the required landscaping for the mini-home park zone, this site would not be visible from Rossay either. We did get an elevation drawing to show the changes in elevation that separate this site from the commercial areas. The building on the far right is the Hampton Inn and Suites, which is about four stories tall. And then the tiny little boxes on the left are the proposed mini-homes. And you can see that they are set in a bit of a dip behind that main hill area, and there's lots of vegetation and trees. So this does mean the site won't be visible or accessible from the commercial area. Just one more vegetation, or one more topography map without the vegetation to show you some changes there. And then the current designation is park and natural area in the municipal plan, and council intended that this designation would permit a range of conservation and appropriate recreation land uses permitted in the city. And it was generally around environmental sensitive or significant areas, lands adjacent to watercourses, coastlines, significant archaeology sites. And then it was also designated places near heritage areas and right beside cemeteries. And while this location is next to a cemetery, and likely how it got designated during the creation of the current municipal plan in 2011, it has been subdivided since the 1980s for residential. So the proposal is to change it to stable designation in the municipal plan, so stable residential would be the one in Schedule B. And it's on municipal services, and it has the potential to accommodate additional development at a scale and density consistent with surrounding context. In this case, the area is already subdivided and intended to be used for residential use, but the street was never developed, and it was never re-designated. From the analysis of the proposed development under the stable residential designation, it does conform to the policies established in the municipal plan. So just a quick overview of those policies. Policy LU 86 and LU 87 are there to ensure compatibility of amendments to the zoning bylaw in the municipal plan, and they are concerned about whether it is compatible with neighborhood context. And in this case, it does conform, as it is an existing lot within an established neighborhood, and the proposed development will be residential in nature, and this is an area with a wide range of residential densities. LU 87 also acknowledges the area will evolve over time in a built-form perspective, but should reinforce that predominant community. And this proposed rezoning will just allow a different type of residential building typology while still maintaining that overall settlement pattern. There is also a supplementary report in your agenda package, and it does have some analysis of policy LU 4, which is usually concerned with when you do a municipal plan amendment, that it ensures the proposal advances the city structure, addresses a lack of available quality land, enhances life for city residents, and does not impact the use and enjoyment of adjacent lands. And this site does conform to that in the sense it is in the primary development area with existing infrastructure and was chosen by the applicant using specific criteria, and it will provide new housing and more affordable options to residents of the city. And it's self-contained on a private property, and is residential use, which is compatible with surrounding land uses. So this is the current zoning at the moment. It's park and utility service. So it's largely park, there's just a tiny sliver of utility services across the access. Staff are proposing to rezone to mini-home park residential, which would accommodate this development, and is intended for areas inside the primary development area. So mini-home park residential, while it allows for mini and mobile homes, also allows it for in other configurations, like the proposal recommended here, which would include community amenities spaces, extra landscaping, and requires things like garbage and access to be handled by the developer. Staff also did do a SEPTED review of this property, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Design, and it's an approach to crime prevention through design and architectural features. And staff found that it showed many of the key goals of SEPTED analysis, like natural surveillance, access control, territorial reinforcement, and maintenance of the site. Public engagement, there was a mail-out on January 6th. The ad was posted on January 17th on the city website. The applicant themselves did door-to-door and one-on-one discussions. And as of this meeting, 18 letters have been received. We got one in a little late. 10 in support, 2 neutral, and 6 against. Please note, some of these did have multiple signatures. And PNC and staff are in alignment and are recommending approval to redesignate from park and natural area to stable area in Schedule A, stable residential in Schedule B, and then rezone from mini-home park, or sorry, from park to mini-home park residential. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, I am going to open the public hearing. And this evening, we've got the two, like I said, huge public hearings that'll take a significant amount of time. So what I'm asking people to do is to come down. I'll ask first who wants to speak against the proposal, and then I'll ask who'd like to speak in favor of the proposal. And when you come down, I'll ask you to give us your name and your address, so that we have some idea of how it's impacting you. And if, once you've heard what you wanted to say, and you would like to just support that, then come on down and give us your name for the public record. But if we could keep the comments to be, like if some person says A, then we don't need 10 As. We just need to know that you agree with that, then so come on down and say that. So I'll open the public hearing, and I'll ask initially if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application, against the proposal.
Good evening, Your Worship and common council members. My name is Lori Cohen-Hackett, and I'm here representing Congregation Sherezetic and the St. John Jewish Cemetery, part of Fernhill. Our cemetery is right on the Sunnyside Avenue, so when you're going up, we're right there on the left. So we have concerns. We've, we did send a letter to the Planning Advisory Committee, and we did receive a letter from Paul Henshaw, project manager for the Sunnyside Homes, replying to our concerns. We sent him another letter, and he did reply to those as well. But we do have issues. And homelessness, as you know, is rampant, not only in St. John, but in the rest of the country. We are dealing with sensitive matters, homelessness, community impact, and preserving sacred spaces. While we agree with the proposal for these tiny homes, and we understand the issue thoroughly, we are still very concerned about the location and the disruption that that will cause. However, as we all know, the world is not perfect. And despite our best intentions, things do not always work out as planned. What we say we will do in order to get what we want and what we actually do are sometimes two different things, as you all know. We sign forms agreeing to be good citizens and follow the rules, and then something happens and it all changes. It's a delicate balance to maintain, as both the urgent need for housing and the preservation of a peaceful, respectful environment are crucial. A major concern that we have not addressed is, given that the city of St. John and the Police Department have allowed the existing encampments to stay in place, it would be very good to have their commitment that should any encampments pop up, either in this tiny homes community or on lands adjacent to the community, that there will be an immediate response and have it dismantled. So on behalf of our cemetery and the 1,000 souls buried there, I would ask that Sunnyside Homes, the United Way, and the city of St. John look for another site that is better suited to developing this proposal. Thank you for your attention to our problem.
Thank you, Lori, for being here this evening. Okay. Thank you. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who'd like to speak against the proposal.
Hi, my name's Derek Parker. I have a home in Forest Hills. My wife, she won't go to the city by herself. She's scared. We were going through Haymarket Square, people urinating right in front of her on the sidewalk. These are the homeless people. When we go to the shopping centers, now, there's the odd person right now that's panhandling, asking for money, sometimes very, you know, aggressive. What our worries is, are they going to put these homeless people, they're maybe on drugs, and they can look after the community, fine, but when they leave and go down to the mall, which they will, that's where they'll be hanging around. Are they going to be panhandling? Are they going to be stoned out of their mind? Like I say, my wife won't go to town without me, and is it going to be the same thing? Because it's right in our backyard now. Last year, I was in my backyard. I live right behind Bella Lion, where the big white pole is there, and I seen color, and it was a tent. So we called the police, because she was crying, and she didn't know who it was. Police said they couldn't do nothing because it wasn't on our property. There was a fence, and it was right behind the fence, so it was like 10 feet from our property. But he did go down, and they did leave. Afterwards, I went down to look around. There was needles and stuff, because this is what we're going to have around our shopping mall. You know, people from Hampton, Sussex, all around the outskirts of St. John, come to Costco, come to, you know, and it used to be East St. John, West St. John. South End was bad, North End was bad. Now, we've taken our problem of the bad people and taken them and putting them in the homeless out here. Like, I talked to United Way, and they said they're going to screen them. But are they? Like the lady just said, you know, the road's paved with good intentions, but are these drug people and people that don't care? You ever been down to Haymarket Square? It's disgusting. Garbage and dirt and everything, all over the place. These people just don't care. I know if I didn't have a place and I had to have a tent, I'd keep it nice and clean around, you know? I have some pride. But is that what people, you know, East St. John used to be a really nice place, and I like to keep it that way, right? We have homes. You know, I paid over $200,000 for my home. I don't want it to, you know, deappreciate because of these people, as long as, you know, and I agree, everybody needs a home. And in our society, when I was 16 years old, I had a minimum wage job, paid my rent, starved half the month. Here it is 56 years later, and it's the same thing. There's something wrong with our society when a man, and everybody ain't smart, everybody ain't intelligent, maybe that's all they can get. Do they have no life, their whole life, because that's all they can do is get a minimum wage job? They can't go get an apartment, can't afford to live? There's something wrong with society. There really is. If you're, you know, willing to get up in the morning and go to work every day, you should be able to live and have a few dollars in your pocket. Anyhow, I'm sorry, I just, it's more for my wife, because she gets ready, she likes to say, people have been rude to her, and cursed and swore, and asked her for money uptown, and I just feel it's coming our way. And like I say, there's got to be a different, be a nice, different place. I know there's a place down there where the old animal rescue leave down in North End, or someplace not so, where everybody, like, everybody goes around Costco, and, you know, it's what people perceive, right? You don't want to go to shop and feel intimidated, get insanity because somebody's up here pushing and being aggressive, trying to get change off you and stuff, just anyhow.
That's the situation we're trying to impact. But anyways, I do appreciate you being here this evening and for to hear your comments. And we'll just say for the record and for full transparency, I do live uptown. I'll be there 40 years this year, so anyways, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak, to speak against the proposal. I'll get you to come up and I'll get you to come up and give us your name and your address.
My name's Brian McLean. I live at 165 West Moreland Road. And not so much opposed as apprehensive about what's in the offing here. I want to be assured that the prospective residents in this development are going to be vetted thoroughly. Will they be clean of drugs? Because if they are still using drugs, that's no good for them, and certainly no good for the adjacent neighborhood. Will they have jobs? Like, anecdotally, I've heard stories of people being homeless who have jobs, and they can't get residences because of the rents being too high. Well, if that's the case, I welcome them with open arms. What I don't want to see is the illicit abuse of drugs. I'm sure everyone's well aware of what's been happening on Waterloo Street in particular and parts of the uptown generally, if you think I exaggerate. In recent months, a close relative of mine was attacked along Union Street by two armed men, one of whom had brass knuckles and wire wrapped around the brass knuckles. An acquaintance of mine was robbed of her purse on King Street, and just a couple of weeks ago, a knife-wielding man had to be subdued in the library, Market Square Library in the middle of the afternoon, by police, and he was threatening the staff. So it appears as if, in many regards, parts of this city, public safety is under threat. Now, I don't want to experience that type of decay in my neighborhood, and so I want to know how this will be prevented. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. You make a compelling case to help, that's for sure. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who'd like to speak against the proposal. Come on down. Oh.
Good evening, Your Worship and Members of Council. My name is Sean Wheatley, and I'm here tonight on behalf of a group of, I'd say, very concerned business property owners who are really concerned about the location of this proposed development.
Cut my mic off, because if I turn my mic off, the camera will go to you.
Is that better?
Yeah, you're good, but I gotta get your address from you.
Pardon me?
Your address?
My address?
Yeah.
My personal address or the people I'm representing?
Yeah, okay, then whoever you're representing.
Okay. I don't have the exact addresses, but you can see the names of the companies that we are, that I'm here tonight on behalf of.
Okay, but you're not a resident over there.
I beg your pardon?
You're not a resident around the area.
No, I'm not. I'm here on behalf of the business owners in the area. And these are the folks that I'm here on behalf of. I think people know where Canadian Tire is, Crosby Foods on Rossay Avenue, DKB Enterprises, which is the home of the TD Call Center, East Point Shopping, I'm sure people are familiar with that, Hampton and Suites is in East Point Shopping, Leon's Furniture's on Rossay Avenue, Mediterranean Restaurants, Rossay Avenue, Motorsport Plus, Rossay Avenue, and the Tiden Hospitality Group, who are the owners of the Parkway Mall, and I think people are familiar with where all those folks are. So collectively, these businesses employ hundreds of people in the city and pay millions of dollars of taxes, and I'm here to represent the concerns that they have asked me to bring to you. Our group certainly understands the, and shares the community interest in this project, but it's the location that is of a concern to us, and that's the reason that I'm here tonight, is to speak about the location, not the project itself. So there are two things I would like to speak to tonight. One is the potential impacts of this project on our neighborhood and the lack of alignment with the municipal plan of this proposed location. So first, let's think about the community impacts. Our feeling is that when vulnerable people are concentrated and isolated in one location, there will be impacts. And these are impacts that have to be proactively managed, and these are impacts that have been clearly expressed to us when we did our research into this tiny homes community. And we did our research primarily based on the experiences that have occurred up in Franklin at the 12 Neighbors Project, which is obviously a very similar project. So to do our research, we spoke to a number of people, including the Franklin City Police, Community Policing Officer, the owners of the Smart Center Shopping Center that's adjacent to 12 Neighbors. We talked to several store managers in the area, and we also reached out to a recognized expert in mental health services and homelessness, Dr. Tim Aubrey from the University of Ottawa. The overall outcome of all of these discussions that we had really raised our level of concern about increased vandalism, shoplifting, intimidation, assaults, and panhandling. And I will say, from what we learned, primarily because of the unwanted visitors that are attracted to the area, and these kinds of activities are particularly concerning to retail businesses, food service businesses, and to hospitality, as well as general commercial enterprises. The other thing that we were told by the Franklin City Police, the Community Policing Officer, was that the wooded area around this proposed Sunnyside in St. John will no doubt be an attraction for unwanted visitors and will make it very easy for unwanted visitors to be near the site. So as, as business operators, we are concerned about the negative impacts that this could have on our customers and our employees. We're very worried about the additional operating costs that we would expect to incur, primarily around security, but also other site maintenance and cleaning problems. We're certainly concerned about the potential for loss of business and therefore a loss of revenues. And obviously, this would lead to a reduced valuation of our properties, which makes it more difficult to finance future expansions that we may want to undertake. If the properties are reduced in value, your ability to finance a new expansion, new construction is limited. So those are the concerns that we have in terms of a business perspective on this proposed The second thing I want to touch on is what appears to be some conflict with the municipal plan policies. If you, if you look at two of the key policy statements that have been in the municipal plan, the first one states that the land use framework provides clarity and certainty for residents and businesses wishing to make informed decisions with respect to investment and places to live and work. And I think the certainty is the key part of this policy that concerns us, that when we see spot rezoning for convenience's sake, it takes away that certainty that people have when they know what the municipal plan has in mind for the city. And secondly, it's pretty clear in the municipal plan that park and natural areas will be largely protected from development. Lands that are in the city that are designated park and natural areas are generally not appropriate for any form of development. And if you look more specifically at some of the policies in the, the individual policies in the municipal plan, as an example, HS 17 states, encourage the provision of housing for people with special needs to integrate into appropriate residential areas. And we don't think that this location that is sandwiched between two large cemeteries and largely a commercial retail area is really a residential area. The next policy, Policy LU 110, it states that the park and natural area designation, which is currently for this particular location, will permit a range of conservation and appropriate recreational land uses and cemeteries. It does not provide for, for housing. If you move on to Policy UD 10, it states that, ensure that new development and redevelopment in stable areas, which the surrounding areas to this location are, are designed to respect and reinforce the physical character and uses of the surrounding residential neighborhood. And we don't think that the tiny homes really is complementary to what is primarily a single-family area in those few homes that are in the immediate, immediate nearby areas. And I think the most important policy that we would quote is LU 4. It states that the council will not consider changing the designation of lands through a municipal plan amendment unless the proposal is necessary by virtue of a supply of quality land, and does not negatively impact the use and enjoyment of adjacent lands and neighborhoods. And...
I've got you at eight minutes, so you've got a couple of minutes to wrap up, okay?
Okay, exactly. So obviously, there's an abundance of undeveloped land in the, in the city, and we don't think that the municipal plan should be changed as a result. So I'll just conclude by saying that the discussion tonight is not about the merits of establishing the tiny homes, but we think that this proposed location presents serious impacts and is not in alignment with the municipal plan. There are other sites to be considered, and we in fact have been in discussion with the United Way about other sites, and we need more time to try and finalize those discussions. And while the project aims to address housing issues, this location in a forested area between two cemeteries and a large commercial retail zone risks undermining these good intentions with serious unintended consequences. So we're simply here to request tonight to have this matter referred back to staff to allow time to properly collaboratively try and find a more appropriate location for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harris, did you have a quick question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, just making sure you can hear me okay, Mayor.
I can.
Okay, apologies to everybody. I'm here at home with babies, so if you see me talking off camera, that's just because I'm trying to get her to go back to sleep. Anyway, I just wanted to ask if Mr. Wheatley had looked into the property valuations around 12 Neighbors Project. It's a bit of a redundant question, but because I just did a quick scan of the property assessment, New Brunswick information. It looks like every property around there has gone up in value quite a bit, including the Smart Centers area that he was talking about, it's gone up in $2 million with the assessment, just from '24 to '25 alone. And it looks like there's been a lot of healthy property value sales there, so, I mean, I understand there's more to your, to your concerns here, and I respect that, of course, but that one specifically stuck out to me as something just to peek at. And it does look like it has had the opposite effect, in the case of 12 Neighbors in Fredericton, on the property values around it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I was just gonna say that we, I see online that we do have 12 neighbors that'll come in and speak to that, or speak to something a little bit later, but if you'd like to address that, but I do have 12 neighbors in the queue.
Counselor Harris, what I'm referring to, property valuation, maybe not strictly in the sense of, of the property tax number, but in the value of the property in terms of obtaining financing moving forward. Commercial properties are generally evaluated based on the income they generate, and I believe that's the way the province also calculates the valuation. And when your operating costs go up, then that comes off the bottom line, or the revenue that your property can, can achieve, and therefore reduces the valuation, particularly in terms of financial institutions. They look at, at the revenue versus the, the cost, and that's how they determine the value that you can borrow against. So it's a, there's two things that can happen. One is if our, if our costs go up, and we understand in our visits to Fredericton that the associated businesses have much more thorough security systems than we have, much more, many more people on site providing security, and all those costs have to be absorbed by the revenue that your property is generating. So that's, that's the concern, is that revenues go down, the valuation goes down, and if on top of that, you lose some business because your tenants decide they'd sooner be in another location or they're reluctant to come, that also has an impact on your revenue and once again can drive down the valuation of your, of your property.
Good, thank you. Counselor Killen, and then Counselor Redwine, then we'll wrap up the speaker and we'll move to the next one. Over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. And Mr. Wheatley, do, does your group of folks have issue with the folks that live in Birdland?
I missed that, sorry.
So do the folks on your list take issue with the people that live in the Birdland neighborhood, which is ostensibly a similar distance to your businesses as this will be?
That they live where?
The, the folks that live in the, in the development Birdland down next, what's the call? Yeah, the mobile, mobile homes that live, Mobile Park, that's right behind New York City.
Oh, you're talking about Moreland Home Park?
Yes. Do you, do your, does your group take issue with the folks that live there?
Well, I don't think that's a fair comparison. If you're referring to the Moreland Home Park, I think that's what you're referring to. That is no longer a mobile home park. The days of trailer parks and mobile home parks are far behind us. That is a manufactured or mini-home community where the residents own their own homes. They are generally either working people or retired people. They are, they are families who live there. They are single folks, there's retired people. It's a very mixed demographic of citizens who have found a affordable way to live in their own home. These folks don't need, you know, wraparound services, they don't need, you know, work, you know, help with their personal issues in life. They are people like you and I who have chosen to buy a home and rent a piece of land to put it on, so private ownership is there because they own their own home, and it's a very mixed demographic of, of people that live there. So we have, we have very few problems with the Moreland Home Park. We have other home parks we have few problems with, but it's not the same type of tiny home community that we're looking at tonight. Thank you.
I think we can agree to disagree on that, but thank you.
Counselor Redwine, got a quick question?
Yes, Mayor, I'm just wondering, what are your two biggest issues with the project? Or, well, you have a list of businesses that you're representing.
I guess if, if you're asking what we're most concerned about...
Yeah.
I would say that our biggest concern is that we have, oh, I guess I've lost the screen, have I?
It might be coming on now.
Wherever it can bring it.
There it is.
We, we, oh, it's back, okay, thank you. So what we have on the one hand is a number of businesses, they're very solid businesses in the city, been there for years. You can see from the list that some have been there for over, in our city for over 100 years. We've got, you know, a shopping area that's, that's transformed the city's retail business, and we all remember the days of our regular program, just over to Moncton, go to Costco and Princess Auto and Chappers. Those stores are now here in our own city, so we can support people working in our own town. We've got another couple of investors from Franklin, DKB Enterprises, who, who came from Franklin and built a building that houses 750 employees. So on the one hand, we've got all of these excellent longstanding businesses, and on the other hand, we've got probably the most respected community organization in the city, the United Way. And I just think it's almost, say, saddening that these two parties can't get together and find a location that respects the concern of these longstanding businesses and also meets the requirements for them to build their tiny homes. So that's why we're asking to refer it back to staff so that we can have time to find a suitable location that meets the needs of both parties.
Okay, thank you.
I was also, Mayor, I was trying to get an idea of the topography. So the building that zoned to go in 450 units next to Hampton Inn, do you have any idea how tall that's gonna be?
We have planned at East Point, one of the companies, to, to build some residential buildings, and they would be somewhere between six and 12 stories in height, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. Counselor Lowe, can you wrap this up for us?
Sure. John, like, you're at PAC, and the ladies from United Way spoke, and you listened to that, and, and, and your, and your presentation's a little different tonight. Did you feel more comfortable after they spoke about security, the fenced-in area? Yourself, you presented the same, but it's different tonight than what you presented at PAC. Not being critical, but did you feel more secure about everything after those two ladies spoke, which no doubt are gonna speak tonight?
You know, we don't question the ability of the United Way to do a good job, but the folks in Franklin are also doing a good job. It's a hands-on entrepreneur, he has family who works there, he's personally interested in the site, and it has problems. We, we told the two developers early on, and when we learned about this project, that we would, we would do some fact-finding and base our decisions based on the facts that we could uncover. we could uncover, and we've done that. We've done very thorough research, and despite the wonder in Fredericton being well-run, the businesses around there still have a lot of problems and requiring extra security. And so it's not a question of how well the United Way can run it, it's a question that it's, it's the environment that's created when you put, try and jam this little community in between a commercial zone, a retail zone that are particularly susceptible to the kinds of spin-off activities you get, and a graveyard, which is a, and a wooded area that are all welcome homes for unwanted visitors. It's about those issues, not the ability of the United Way to do a good job. We don't question that at all.
All right, that's it. Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for, what? Oh, deputy, over to you, sorry. I didn't see your light on.
John? Just one more question or two. I got two questions. It's just a yes or no. You don't have to go into a long explanation. Did your eight or 10 companies approach you, or did you approach them?
It would be a combination.
No, no, yes or no? Did you approach them?
Some of them, yes.
Okay. Do those companies have any connection with your company? Do they lease property, buildings, or any kind of connection with you?
The only connection would be the Leon's Furniture Store, which is owned by another family member.
So they do.
And Hampton Inn owns their own property.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, there are very few connections.
All right, thanks, John. All right, I'll call again. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who'd like to speak against the proposal. You probably, you can pull that mic down a little bit for you there. I'll get you to give us your name and your address, please.
My name's Tanya Scribbins. I live in the West Moreland Heights area, and I am terrible at this, so forgive me, be gentle. It is not that we as citizens did not know that there was this community going in, and I'm not standing to object the community itself. The problem was a gross misunderstanding of mine whereby I was just made aware that it is not in fact a dry community, and that is where some of my problems arise. I have taken an hour to write something up. It will not be clear and concise, but hopefully there is some good information in there. And I come to you all as somebody who has both been homeless and lost friends to drugs, so I'm not somebody without sympathy, and I'm not somebody unfamiliar with what's going on and how it's changed in the last 20 years. So I am not a NIMBY. We recognize the urgent need for affordable housing, and I understand that any solution is going to impact somebody's backyard. However, I do stand here to challenge the strategic approach of combining efforts to address both homelessness and substance abuse without a clear focus on one or the other. By not requiring a dry community or simply spreading the problem around, diffusing it into less affected communities for more affected communities, and in doing so, you lose one of the more enticing ways of supporting success. There's one less stage in the recovery process. You're not evaluating the likelihood of success of individuals when helping, or by helping people closest to success. You would immediately reduce those needing assistance by not addressing the easiest and the, to get out of the system. That leaves non-users vulnerable and could push those who are recently homeless, non-users, and elderly closer to addiction while they struggle to cope. This does not cause a meaningful reduction as much as spread resources and support services even thinner. We've heard nothing about the requirements to maintain access to the tiny home community, nothing about restrictions or limitations on occupation or cleanliness standards, or the long-term funding required for the maintenance of these vague wraparound services. And please, I apologize if that information has been made public. I did look for what I could find. It was not as readily as available as I would have liked. So there is currently, sorry. There is not enough funding right now, nor is there an expectation of substantial increases, and while putting local residents at risk, this leads to tensions and can undermine the success of the initiative. By concentrating like-minded and problematic individuals, you are creating a segregated community where troublemakers drive out those with the highest chance of success, and you can look no further than the boulevards, having lived there myself. When you, you know, push back on a local drug dealer, they put out your windows, and three strikes, you're out. So, you know, you're relocating those who need services away from the services they need the most, such as the many churches, food banks, mental health and health services, clean needle exchanges, and job search help, as well as the social assistance office. All these resources have been concentrated in the uptown area, and isolating them in a community that does not prioritize good behavior as a prerequisite or mental stability as a prerequisite, you're putting residents themselves and of the surrounding area in danger. By using it as transitional housing rather than housing first, you could rapidly relieve the people requiring services and give them dignity of living in a community that they can be proud of, and you are aware that this is going to be problematic. As indicated by your own PAC committee meetings and highlighted again tonight, you've spoken about the fence, the lighting requirements to provide a safe and secure area, while simultaneously highlighting the natural vegetation that will deter non-residents from visiting and quote-unquote "remained screened away from the neighboring properties." All with a natural area on either side encased in greenery ripe for fires and out of the public eye, ripe for encampments, again, out of the public eye. You want 10% community spaces, gardens and centers that will mean nothing as they become destroyed and eventually neglected, just as those already in the uptown area if you concentrate people there who do not care about those kinds of areas. And the fact that the CPTSD crime prevention through environment and design claims quote-unquote "shopping centers" are crime deterrents, that's laughable. So we are already crying, and the stores are already crying about the lack of police intervention and arrests for clear crimes committed on video. So the fact that it will be on video gives me no assurances. Where we could have easily had access to jobs for those who have successfully completed programs and who are ready to reintegrate into the workforce, you are going to place users who may be looking for their next fix. We have given nothing in depth about these wraparound sources, nor where the money will come from, or any assurances that the truly problematic people will be removed, that tents and friends will be removed, that there will be limits on the amount of people living there. Will being caught with four people living in a tiny home mean you lose your spot to someone who can abide by the rules? And all of this in an area that discourages public interaction, thereby reducing reintegration with the rest of society. This is not a way to address concerns simultaneously, not affecting meaningful change in the housing crisis. I know that you received many of letters of support, and all of them highlighted the housing crisis, and we have no problems in supporting an initiative that addresses that at all. But keep the housing project and move away from housing-first model towards a transitional housing model where the completion of programs provided in the city centers or requisites or prerequisites for this opportunity can create a truly safe neighborhood, reducing the stress on the support system, addressing those most easily assisted first so that those requiring more assistance have the funds available. Now is not the time to be increasing expenditures, spreading them even thinner. I invite managing partners from the United Way to elaborate on if there are alternative models that could be considered. Please show me evidence that this type of model is the best model for the area. And while this has been framed as a housing problem, in not having a dry community, it is a drug problem. So I think the way it's been stressed is simply a housing problem, which we can all agree on. And then you're asking, do you not support housing? Well, of course we do, but you're muddling the two in an ineffective way that really I don't feel is necessarily going to be in the best interest for everybody. So I beg of you to look at the models for addressing homelessness and reconsider something transitional where those who are positive members in the overnight shelter step in stages to other units, who then step in stages to their own units. We've seen cases where you give people who are on drugs a house, and then they go there and they overdose by themselves. They're used to having a support network watching out for them. They're used to carrying Narcan for their friends. I don't believe this is the most successful model, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tanya, for being here this evening. Appreciate your perspective. Okay, I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the proposal. Come on down and give us your name and address.
My name's Michelle Goss. I live at 296 West Moreland Road, so this proposed project will be directly behind my house. I am against this location. I am very concerned about my safety and the safety of my neighbors. I'm a single female, and I've been living at this location for the last 20 years. I've never had any issues before, but now I, now I'm very concerned about the increase in trespassing, vandalism, and theft what these tiny homes will bring to the area. I'm concerned about who's going to pay for any vandalism. The people who caused it, they won't have the means to have it fixed. I've already encountered someone in my backyard passed out. I wouldn't feel safe going out by myself checking on them. By the time the police came, it might be too late. I feel for their safety as well. I don't want to feel unsafe in my own home. I already avoid a lot of areas. I don't go for walks in parks anymore. I don't walk uptown. Many people are afraid to go out for walks now. And the bus stop that they have is in a very unsafe location. It's a very busy street. One morning, I went out, there was a shopping cart and personal belongings in the bus stop, so it looks terrible on a main street. Who would be responsible for cleaning up the messes? I think there's many issues caused by having so many people move into this location, and I feel the security on site will not be able to control all the problems that are going to be encountered.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against the proposal? Do you have any, I'm asking you to come on down, give us your address, and if you've got something different than what everybody else has already recorded for it, that'd be great, too.
My name's Andrea St. Pierre. I'm a registered nurse, and I am a licensed counseling therapist as well. I have worked also in intensive care for many years, and I've worked with people with addiction behaviors and psychosis and all those mental health disorders that accompany a lot of the homeless that are there today. So for one, the big thing is I actually own the property that's connected to the Sunnyside Homes where they're going to be. I own two acres, 2.2 acres there. I have a senior father who lives on 298 West Moreland Road with my nephews. They're age five, seven, and 12, along with my niece and nephew and my nephew's fiance. I also have a brother as well who is becoming more deconditioned and stuff. I've already had people, so I believe there might have been an encampment somewhere behind Fern Hill Cemetery, because I also own the business on the Rossay Avenue location where I've already encountered somebody entering my counseling practice when it was me alone, which was really super scary, and had to try to escort him out, and he was over six-foot large man. I don't think I'd be able to fight him, but I could sure try. I'm also a military veteran, so this whole flight-to-fight response is really very evident when I encounter someone on my property. Last month, I encountered a gentleman with his bicycle right beside Michelle Goss's house. He was actually going back up the driveway. He actually spoke with my 12-year-old nephew, wanting his bicycle tire and asking for tools. So yeah, I flipped out at the man, and if we were able to carry firearms, I'm scared of carrying one because I'm not sure what I would do with that if he would have actually started to assault me. So in saying that, I'm feeling a lot of vulnerability, whether in the city of St. John, uptown, and now on my own property. I had an encampment that was at the top of the hill, so right where the power station is, there was an encampment that was still on my property. They had a propane tank. We had to remove the propane tank, remove the encampment. There was needles in there. There was no bedding, so it was for primary IV drug use. That's really scary because when we went up to there, we weren't sure what we were going to encounter, so we did weaponize ourselves the best as we could and hoping that we wouldn't have to defend ourselves. Luckily, the people weren't there. So this is very scary. And then when you're looking at Sunnyside, we have the, all the Jewish cemetery that road, you have a city line that comes across in front of my property on 298 because of a main water line that runs through there. So now people are starting to walk through there, and I believe they're going through Fern Hill, whether or not they have an encampment there. And it's very clear that they're mentally unbalanced, and it's just, it's just not cool. So finding needles on the property, we found another way on the top of the hill, I found that my kids are finding this, so this is really scary, and they're dirty needles with a 2-liter Coke bottle and about 10 needles in there. So that's already there before you place this in there. From my understanding now, it really hits home because I have a strong family member that I'm very close with that is homeless. I cannot bring him home because of the addiction, because of the needle use and the risk that he poses on other people, and that breaks my heart. So addiction and mental health breaks my heart. I really feel like our city council, we really need to be upping our police force. We need to up our consequence on people that are using, people that are IV drug-using, using crack on the streets of uptown or any location. They need to be arrested, and they need proper consequence, and saying that, there needs to be rehab programs. The other thing is I had an uncle that was homeless last year, and he had dementia. Nobody was not diagnosed. Because I'm a nurse, I was able to push it, and I got my uncle admitted, and his dementia, now he can barely speak. I believe of some of the homeless that are up there are very vulnerable sectors. Some could be with cognitive delays. Some are seniors like my uncle, where adult protection and more assessments of that population need to be conducted and get them to proper homes, whether nursing homes, special care homes. There needs to be a lot more. I worry about the proper, the proper part of, okay, the last time when United Way was talking, it just sort of like made a venue like, well, it's not going to be people in social development, but then, of course, then they mentioned social development. So in scanning this, and I said, okay, what is going to be your criteria? You cannot mix the population. They said, sometimes there's going to be seniors there. That would be awesome. Bring my seniors, give them proper housing. Make sure they're safe. If you have to put a fence up and security cameras, you're telling me my seniors that are going into those homes are not safe. If someone is psychotic or schizophrenic and they're not taking their medications, you're running the risk to cause harm to the one that's in beside of the next, the next home. It is not a dry community. There's not going to be rapid drug testing, drug testing one year sobriety. Make sure that they're sober for a year plus. You cannot mix this population with a vulnerable sector. It's not even fair, it's not safe. The other thing is, I guess when one of the counselors challenged John Wheatley about the West Moreland Park home, it really triggered me, I'll be honest. My aunt now, she needs, and her husband needs to go to a one-level home, so they're selling their $500,000 home and building a $300,000 mini-home that's one level and going into a mini-home park. Very different people, so I just want to be very, making that very clear to people, and I found that very offensive. The other thing is my property value. Where's my property value going to be at, okay? Who's going to compensate me if I can't sell my house because nobody wants to be there? One person told me after the meeting who supports this, and he'll probably speak tonight, he said, it's got to be in somebody's backyard. I said, well, why not yours? Or why, you know, put it in your backyard. You want to help the community, put it in your yard. Start putting a tent up in your yard and then bringing people in. See how long you'll last when you're having different things, whether it's psychotic and people that you got to defend yourself, or you got a needle and your kid gets poked by it. So that's very different. But then they said, oh, by the way, you know, when we had a drug dealer, we just moved out of our home and we sold it. So does this mean that I need to put my house on the market right now? My father is 76 years old. He loves it back there, loves it. It feels like he's up in Carriquet right now, right? You're going to take that away from him, and then I have to worry about him in the backyard having his little tiny bonfire with his family and someone crossing over trespassing down in my trees. I'm really scared.
Andrea, I've got you. Andrea, I've got you just over seven minutes, so I'll get you to wrap it up for us.
Okay.
A lot of the points that you bring, I think we've heard. We certainly understand that. We've heard them from all sectors of the city as well.
And so then I asked this question today. I know, you know, it got approved by City Advisory Committee. So I have a feeling that you guys are going to do it because you think this is the quick fix. I don't feel this is the location for this area whatsoever. And again, you know, who's responsible? So when you approve this today and if there's something that happens to my family member or if I get a trespasser or anything, is the city going to be compensating and are they going to be responsible once this has been done? Who's the liability hold to? Who do I contact? United Way or the city who made this final approval? I guess that's my big question for you all as you make that decision.
All right. Thank you for being here.
Any questions?
No questions. I'll ask again if there's, nope, no questions. If there's anyone here, anyone else who would like to speak against the proposal and has something other than what we've heard to add to this, we're just, we've got it, this kit for this one is 200 pages. We've read a lot of the letters, all the letters that have been in there. And two of the councillors have sat on the PAC and have heard both sides of the argument. So I'm just trying to gather, we have staff who are gathering as well all of the information for us. So is there anyone else here would like to speak against the proposal? I want to ask three times. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who'd like to speak against this proposal. I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like, anyone else who'd like to speak against the proposal. So I'll ask if there's anyone here then who would like to speak in favor of the proposal. I'd like to go to the online people first, if you don't mind, John, because I see them online up there and just want to make sure that we can hang on to them. So I've got up there, it looks like we have four speakers. Are they separate, are you separate speakers or all together there? I've got, okay, so I've got Marcel Lebrun, you're speaking up, and Ashley Chapman and Al Smith. Okay, so can I pass the podium over? Can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you now.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone.
So I'll get you to give us your name and I'll get you to give us your address, your information of how you're speaking on behalf of this or in the neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Marcel Lebrun and I'm the founder of the 12 Neighbors Community in Fredericton. And with me today is Al Smith and beside me here and Ashley Chapman, who are both residents here in the 12 Neighbors Community. May I proceed or?
Sorry, yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to say a few words in support of Sunnyside community and also reiterate the commitment that we've made to United Way and the team working on this, that we're very happy to partner and freely share everything that we've learned and developed here in terms of making our community a success and committed to helping United Way and the team make this a success in St. John, not just a success as a Sunnyside community, but I think as an overall upgrade to the broader community in St. John as well. And that's what's really happened here in Fredericton. There isn't a day that goes by now where, three years later, where I don't hear from someone in the city, a businessperson or a community member, who's happy and proud that we have a community like this in our city and they're excited to hear the stories and the individuals who've been able to show that, what they can do when barriers are challenged and when opportunities are available to them. Frederictonians are excited about what we did here. And what I would say is that, you know, since we've moved in, there's been huge development around us. We have a new no-frills across the street. The Bank of Montreal is moving from Main Street to across the street from us. Shoppers Drug Mart just opened. Pet stores, lots of development in the area. And in terms of the gentleman was talking about having done their research, the businesses here's revenues are up significantly. And I'm not saying we're taking credit for that, just incredible growth. In fact, the Walmart here, I actually know the numbers, but I won't share them because they're private. But this Walmart is one of the largest and fastest-growing in the country. It's been just incredible. And so the property values are up, the revenues are up, and we don't have panhandling or assaults happening, you know, involving our community members before. In fact, I'll tell you two stories. So when I first moved onto the property and it was just trees, I met an individual who was living in his car in Walmart. So they're already in this, all over the city, individuals living in the woods, individuals living in their cars. And he was living for a long time, I think two winters, in his car in the Walmart parking lot, watched our community go up. And then we managed to get him housed in here as the eighth community member and then became housed, took a little while to even move from his car to the house and adapt, and then eventually joined our team as one of the carpenters and he helped build another 80 homes after. And now he lives on his own in Grand Bay. He's moved out and has his own place. And so we actually, you know, are helping with others who have been around in the area. There's another gentleman who was living in the woods for three years, a senior, mid-60s, who we worked over a year to try to get him housed and then got him moved in here. And he's doing fantastic. And so, you know, I think that overall, the community's improved. What I wanted to share today, and I'm going to hand it over to Ashley and Al, is just the idea of crime and the research. And I shared a document with you that I'm happy to have you share. But basically, the most peer-reviewed, evidence-based action that any community can take to reduce crime is supportive housing. And supportive housing has a triple benefit of reducing crime, alleviating healthcare pressure, reducing homelessness, and also saving money. So the peer-reviewed data that I sent along, for every dollar spent in supportive housing, there's a net savings of $1.40. And I'll just mention a couple of them. There's Seattle/Washington, there's a business-driven analysis that was done prompted by business concerns in the community overall of growing crime. And they found that a small number of prolific offenders were creating a lot of the crime issues, which is similar to many communities. And housing interventions significantly reduced justice involvement. And you can read that report. In Minnesota, the evidence there, a study on housing first showed a 90% reduction in jail stays and significant reductions in substance use, homelessness, hospitalization, and emergency reuse from housing. In Vancouver, there was a Health Canada and Mental Health Commission of Canada randomly-controlled trial that housed individuals, 67% of them had prior criminal justice involvement. And they compared it to a housed group and an unhoused group and found the significant reduction in crime and reoffending. And in Portland, there was a pre-post study done that showed reduced costs in healthcare, jail time, police involvement within one year of participants entering supportive housing. So it is not only a crime reduction strategy for a city, it's actually the most effective thing that you can do. But, so we're happy to support it. We're with you all the way. We'll share everything that we know and all our learnings. But I'd love to give Al and Ash a few minutes to share their experience, having lived here. Al, by the way, just achieved this three-year anniversary here.
Yep.
Last week.
I know.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to give Al to give us his name and then you've just disclosed where he lives, I guess, but.
Yeah, okay. Well, so.
Or do you?
Okay. Okay, Ashley, Ashley's going to go first. So you share your address.
Ashley.
And then where you live.
I'm Ashley. I live here at 12 Neighbors. I came here from the Grace House here in Fredericton. It's a women's homeless shelter. I was in an abusive relationship for two years and I lost my child. Thankfully, she's with my family. And it wasn't because of drugs. I was able to study from home being here. I'm a nutrition and behavior change specialist now and I am able to help people who were in similar situations like me on the streets and help them get through some pretty hard situations. And now I am helping to facilitate 12-step programs here. I was able to further my small business, gain my relationship back with my family. Me and my daughter are reunited and so happy and I'm frequently in her life. 12 Neighbors here is easy access to bus routes for appointments and for work. I have employment here at the 12 Neighbors Community and with their cafe. And I love it. Like the customers have nothing bad to say. Everything is so supportive and I love it. We have a good sense of community here. We have different programs like TAR and ART here, which are quite fun and gets people out of their houses and, you know, to gather and talk to each other and to support each other, like through some similar situations. Most importantly, I feel really comfortable living here and I'm able to sleep at night with no problems. I feel really safe, the security here, there's cameras, there's lights, like it's a safe place, like for abusive women to come and, you know, get their stability back, so. Yeah, that's a little bit about myself.
Thank you, Ashley. And then Al?
I am Al in the 12 Neighbors Community. I've lived here for three years now and I started working for 12 Neighbors, I believe, two weeks after I arrived here. I was homeless for five years before I got here and it's changed my life all the way around. I mean, not just from being homeless, but my whole life. And I'm very grateful for 12 Neighbors Community being here for myself, for doing this for everybody. And I support Sunnyside and would go and, and I would be the mayor there if I could. I'm not afraid of it and I'd love to be there and help anytime, in any way I can to help David or whoever, United Way, anybody that's involved in it, I'd love to help if I can. I don't have a car, but I'll do anything virtual or whatever I can to help. And I think that the communities and all over Canada need to have these homes. I mean, I live in the greatest community on the planet right now and I think everybody can have that. I don't believe that saying that you don't want it in your backyard, go bring it to somebody else's backyard is going to help the problem at all. You need to build and you guys have to trust in us. We have a lot of people in here, I've seen them all. Just recently at Christmas, we had a, we, over the years I've been here, we've had community barbecues and concerts. And now that we have our social enterprise center up and our cafe, at closing time at Christmas, we had all of our community members come in and we had lower points we're singing here. And I've never seen so much happiness in all of our community members being in there in that cafe at that time at Christmas. It was the most proudest I was in the whole time I've been here. But I'm proud of everybody that's here and have come here and struggled. They were up there on those streets and they're cold still. It was cold here the other day and I think of the homeless all the time and I feel for them. And we all need to get together and build these places wherever they can be. So throwing them out in my backyard to throwing it into somebody else's backyard is not the answer. We get houses. Everybody in Canada deserves a home. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Al, and because apparently you're well-known. Thank you very much for being here this evening and for coming in virtually for us, bringing your perspective. Council Redwan has a quick question. Council Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I wanted to throw this over to Mr. Lebrun. Thanks for joining us tonight from Fredericton. I just, I mean, obviously you've had some great success that you're sharing, but let's be honest, you must have had some challenges. Can you tell us about them and how did you break down those barriers?
For me, I never had a drug abuse or alcohol abuse, so I didn't come. So that means, just to show, not every homeless person is on drugs. Some people lose their homes for various reasons. Like for me, I went homeless because the place that was subsidizing decided not to subsidize. So 72 people went homeless the same day I did. And it wasn't for anything they had done, it was just that decision that was made by the company. So that's where I became homeless. And once you get there to the homeless, it's hard to get back. It's a real challenge. You can't go and work, you have no home, you can't shave, you can't shower. It's hard enough. And I lived, I was homeless with my spouse and we were in a tent in the woods and it's cold and it was hard. And those are the challenges. People in here that may maybe do, have abuse problems, addiction problems, we have counselling here and we have the help they need. And I find that everyone is doing well. I don't think this is a community where you need to be afraid. We're, we all can walk up and down this, this community without any fear, any kind of problems. I just haven't seen them myself. It's been the best community I've ever lived in. And I've lived in many housing places in Ottawa. I grew up in the housing system, so I know what it's like and this is, you're never going to find a place better than this and I challenge anybody to do it and I hope you will.
I appreciate that insight, Al. I was hoping Marcel could speak on any challenges that you've had in managing, like the operations, just to, you know, we have so, obviously some community members that are worried, they have some worries, and I'm just wondering if he can help alleviate some of the concerns.
Absolutely. And like anything, any other community, there's always incredible stories and challenges as well. And so we have people here from 19 to 70 years old and we have some folks, let's say, for example, who have just an impeccably clean house, you know, like Ashley's. And then we have others that are a mess, like Al's. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, not like Al's. You know, we have, we have 20-year-olds who would struggle to, let's say, maintain a home. And our staff do home inspections and we do training and, okay, this is because you haven't taken your garbage out in two weeks, so now we got to, you know, teach you these skills. And so there's lots of things that are focused on, how do you help people establish the skills of housing stability? So, you know, another one, you know, obviously paying your rent, figuring out how to, you know, deal with conflict, you know, those kinds of things. So we have the whole spectrum of individuals from those who need a lot more support and those who don't. And we've had a number of people go very quickly from homelessness to housed, off-social-development and employed. And we've had some as well who we have not, we've not been able to house and have had to move on. Now, in our case, a little bit different than Sunnyside, we, from the beginning, set out to bring folks in with all acuity levels. So we have mixed acuity, including the highest acuity. We have individuals here with, you know, undiagnosed, untreated mental health issues who are very stable in their housing, whose homes are very clean, who live peaceably in community, but they're, you know, they have opportunity for growth and it's really about behavior more so than underlying conditions. We have Uh, we have, um, addictions counselor on staff available to anyone at any time and everything we do is invitational. So we're always here inviting people to, you know, progressively forward and, um, and, you know, patiently move through it. So, but, you know, we don't have the, um, you know, panhandling on the street corner in front of us. And we don't, you know, it's a community like any others. And, uh, unlike Sunnyside, we don't even have a fence here. And so people can come and go as they please. It's like any other neighborhood. And people from Fredericton, you know, on Sundays, they come through all the time, right? And just drive by and look at the houses and, you know, that kind of thing. So, um, yeah, you know, it's, it, it, the key is, it has to be an actively managed community. This is the key. No matter what you do, whether you did a, a sanctioned tent encampment or, you know, a high-end apartment, it's, it's, the key is that it's an actively managed space. Uh, the problem with some government social housing is it's not actively managed. It's only the tenant, you know, the rent collection. And then, of course, the local drug dealers can be running the place in no time. The key is that it has to be community managed. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, Council Sullivan, I'll get you to wrap us up on this one.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, thanks for taking the time to be with us tonight. Um, you've been on the call, so you've heard the concerns of the neighbors, you know, the, the direct neighbors. And you've used the word "community" a lot and, and, um, I, you've done a good job of explaining within the community how you're a community. Could you speak to greater community relationship of Twelve Neighbors with their neighbors?
Yeah, great. Uh, thank you for asking that. Um, so we're very active in, uh, having constant communication and dialogue with our neighbors. Um, our neighbor who manages the Walmart store next door is also an employer. And, you know, he, if, if he said, you know, if I have anyone I think will be a fit, he'll put him right in front of the interview line. And we have individuals here who have been working over there at Walmart for a couple of years. Uh, Canadian Tire, the owner of Canadian Tire next door has actually been a significant donor and sponsor of our community. And so we, we work hard to maintain those relationships. St. Mary's First Nation, of course, is next door. And when I came here, I met with council, uh, St. Mary's council. And I said, um, that I, I want, you know, I was asking for their support. There were some counselors that had concerns that they already, you know, have, um, uh, a number of, you know, marginalized community members. And they were like, are we going to be good for each other? And, uh, we invested in that relationship and worked really hard. And in fact, have many, uh, St. Mary's community members now housed in our community with support from, uh, St. Mary's housing. And so we've been investing in that relationship. And then some of our resident, residents, even, like, we have a neighbor next door and Al's, Al's befriended him and become, you know, hey, if, if there's anything going on that you need to talk to us about, right?
He calls me if there's, uh, any problems. I haven't had any calls for a while, but I call him once in a while to see how he's doing. But he lives right next door to us, right beside us. And people go through his yard. And I think at first he was a little nervous of that. No one has ever stole anything from him. He would let me know immediately. Uh, they go through his yard. I, I understand. He doesn't always like that. Um, he asked Marcel if we put a fence up, if Marcel would put a gate so I could go visit him. But, um, he's a, he's a really nice guy and he's, he's really grown with our community, actually.
So the point is that we're, we're, we're active in conversation and I think that's really important. And, uh, you know, we listen and now we have a bunch of new neighbors that we are going to reach out to and get to know that have, uh, just opened new businesses across the street, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Your Worship.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask, uh, uh, now, apparently we have a Paul Herschaw. Is he, that was registered? Must be vert, here vert, no? Okay. Okay, all right. So, yeah, I'll ask if there's anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the, uh, and I'll ask the same thing, that if you've got points that are sort of different or whatever, that we can... Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, we gotta get that speaker on.
Oh, thank you so much. My name's Alexia Healis. I'm the Senior Executive Director for Central and Southwestern New Brunswick. And I'm joined by my colleague Sarah Napier, who's the President and CEO of United Way Maritimes today. Thank you for the opportunity to share more about our project. I know you've had time to read, uh, a lot of, uh, information in the package, so we'll try not to repeat too much, but I'll pass it over to Sarah.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us here today. Just to point out a little bit about who United Way is, I know that you're all familiar with United Way, uh, in the St. John area. And we're certainly committed to community change and we've been doing so for over 100 years, uh, across the Maritimes. So we have a long history of making an impact on the issues that matter most. A little bit about United Way Maritimes. Uh, last year, seven different United Ways from across the region came together. Uh, and we came together, um, as one organization so that we could do more together. So that meant drawing on one another's expertise and experience, uh, and learning from one another and ensuring that we were making as much impact as possible based on how we're structured. And with that, we were able to establish officially an affordable housing division of United Way Maritimes. And at present, we're working on several projects. So Sunnyside project is one of those projects and you've heard a lot about that tonight in terms of some different perspectives. Alexia is going to speak to that. I wanted to speak specifically to another tiny home community that we're currently managing in Lower Sackville, Nova Scotia, and give a little bit of a perspective on how that's been working. First and foremost, um, we have 60 units in this particular community in Lower Sackville, which is in suburban Halifax. We are adjacent to a residential community. We are adjacent to businesses, close to a health center, bus routes, and several other, um, uh, community-type of facilities that are very important for proximity for our service for the residents of that community. It is a peaceful and respectful community. And that's something that's been very important to us. And as Marcel, uh, and Al and others were speaking about what's happening in Twelve Neighbors, we would echo that, that that's been our experience in Lower Sackville. Specifically, I think it's important that we address that there is some misinformation and stereotypes about, about homelessness. And, uh, we heard Mayor Al speak about that a little bit. Um, but there are a wide range of experiences of individuals who are precariously housed or homeless. And in the case of the tiny home community in Lower Sackville, which would be modeled, a model that we're following for Sunnyside, in addition to, uh, individuals being on a by-name list, there is an extensive interview process for all of our residents. The residents of the community pay rent. They also sign a lease and they adhere and agree to community standards. And it's been a very positive experience to date. We have had, uh, no issues, uh, since opening last fall. Uh, and it's also been really important to note that businesses locally are now volunteering at the site. We have, uh, we've done extensive relationship building with neighbors, business and resident alike. And we continue to do that to make sure that we are good neighbors and that we're well-integrated into community because that is also a priority of United Way. We believe in St. John as a community. We want to do something that makes sense and is viable and strong and sustainable for St. John. I also wanted to address a comment about, uh, the community not being a dry community. Um, we have made the decision that it's not a dry community, just like any other neighborhood in the community of St. John. People have choice, uh, to live as they wish. And that is also, there's a stereotype about, uh, drug abuse that exists, which also is not the norm or the, the average, as Al spoke about. There are lots of different scenarios. And again, through our vetting process, we will support people and make sure that they are well, well-housed and that we will be housing people that will fit well with the community of Sunnyside. Just one other, um, thing I'd like to say about, uh, some residents that have been, uh, living in our community. Um, some of the residents are individuals who are shift workers. And for the first time in years, they're able to have stable, safe sleep in the daytime to be successful in their nighttime shifts. And that's a game changer for individuals who just want to, uh, be responsible contributors to society. Another resident, uh, the first thing that she did upon moving in was baked a big batch of cookies for all of the other residents because she hadn't had access to some of her own kitchen facilities for a long time. So this is a community that we want to be echoing and learning from Twelve Neighbors, but we will also be learning from Lower Sackville. And our community there is United Way as the owner and operator about what, uh, we do here with Sunnyside. And we're very proud, uh, to be a part of this project and appreciate your time here tonight.
No, sorry.
The, uh, so I, I won't, everybody knows the need. I think that's been spoken to and I think other people will probably touch on that. So I wanted to just really focus on what our vision is for this project. So our vision, as has been stated, is that we will have, be providing up to 75 permanent supportive housing units with wraparound supports for those currently experiencing homelessness. Um, this project, uh, has been also like let, been, um, been informed by those with lived experience. That's very important for us to, uh, as United Way, to build something that is informed by the people who we aim to serve. The residents, as we, as we have said, will be selected from the by-names list and the, the NB Housing list. And they, we will be setting the requirements. So we are looking at, uh, serving individuals who have a low-to-mid level of service need. So we will not be able to accept people in our community that have very severe or complex needs that we aren't going to be able to support with our tailor-made, uh, wraparound supports. Um, and also, all of the residents need to be able to live independently in their home and they need to be a part of the community. And participation in our wraparound supports will be a condition of, uh, tenancy at Sunnyside as well. Um, I think it's important to note that no one housing, uh, project can meet all the needs in the community and nor should they try to. Uh, so we know that we're not going to be all things. We know this is not the only solution, but we know this is part of it and we know that this is a critical time in our city and we need, um, to have some supports as quickly as possible. Um, this will be a well-managed community. That is, um, our plan. Um, it's not a shelter. It's not a tent encampment, but it is permanent supportive housing. We will have, uh, 24/7 access to supports for the individuals that are on-site. That'll include all of the appropriate security measures, like lighting and fencing and policies that are designed to keep not only the residents safe, but also, um, the neighbors as well as the local businesses and customers as well. Um, as we, we've talked a lot about having wraparound supports. We're in the process of, I think we're issuing our RFP today, uh, for the, the organization that will be helping and working with us to offer those wraparound supports. Um, and we also will have very, uh, strong, robust community standards that everybody will sign on to, that will talk about how individuals in our community need to act both in their homes and also on our shared community space and outside their homes. Um, they need to be able to maintain their property, both inside and out, as Marcel has said. And for any of you, I know some of you have gone to Twelve Neighbors um, and, and have seen that it is well-maintained. It looks like any other community. People are walking their dogs. People are going, bringing, coming back from the laundry facility. It's a pretty, like, calm, as, as Sarah said, peaceful community. And of course, um, it's very important for us to have ongoing, ongoing neighborhood commu-, uh, communications and engagement. So we have, um, continued to meet with, um, a lot of the people who have spoken here tonight. We've met with or communicated with, um, uh, over email and we remain available to continue having those conversations. And it is our goal to continue to stay, uh, engaged and available to address any concerns the community may have as we develop the proj-, project, but also as the project rolls out. Um, modular homes, I don't think this hasn't really come up as an issue, but really the reason we've gone with the modular idea is just from a timing standpoint. It allows us to get something built rather quickly. And a large apartment building, for example, could take as long as five years. And really, we're trying to, uh, meet an immediate need and that modular, um, is a really great option to do that. Uh, I've talked a little bit about community engagement. Um, we have, uh, we have a website. We have spoken with all of the residential neighbors, some of whom you've heard from here, from tonight, and done our best to work and address, work, you know, we want to continue to work with them to address some of their concerns. We've met with local businesses and organizations. Um, we've reached out to even, you know, some of the companies. We've been talking to the companies on the list that Mr. Wheatley represents as well. You know, again, if their names are listed there, we want to talk to them face-to-face. So we've gone and been meeting with those companies as well. We've had an open house. We have a demo home over at St. John Energy. Um, and we will continue to have that, uh, neighborhood engagement as we move forward. Um, the project is notionally about a $10 million project and we anticipate funding from all levels of government to help us get there. That is a, a critical piece of the success of this project as well. Um, Sarah, I'll let you wrap up.
I, I was gonna say, I'll get you to wrap up shortly. I've got you at about eight and a half minutes.
Great. So just our final slide, uh, just an indication that we will be building up to 75 homes, uh, for people currently experiencing homelessness. As Alexia said, that would be for low, uh, to mid-acuity in terms of being the right fit for the neighborhood. Uh, the rent will be paid at 30% of a resident's income. And the wraparound supports, uh, that we've been discussed, and that certainly has come up as well tonight in terms of some questions about what those wraparound supports will be. Much of that will be customized in collaboration with the residents and what those residents will need. But we will be looking at financial literacy. We will be looking at health. We will be thinking about childcare. We will be thinking about addictions, if it's relevant, as well as other supports to make sure that the community is, is fulsome in terms of how those communities come together and really form a strong neighborhood.
I have a question for you from Council Sullivan. Over to you, Counselor.
Thanks, Your Worship. Two questions. First, can you give us, for those of us who aren't as involved, what low-to-mid acuity means?
Yeah, it is, it is a, a challenging, so it, I think a better term is a low-to-mid, like, level of service, uh, need. So somebody with a very complex, uh, mental health, uh, issue that is, or, or that has a, an uncontrolled addiction, that's not able to function on their own without full support. So somebody that would need more, you know, one-on-one care at all times would not be the right fit for this, um, community. So you really do have to have the capacity to live on your own, keep your, keep your home clean, follow the rules, those types of things. So that's sort of, that's what a mid-to, mid, it's, it's sort of an industry term that we use, but it really means that the level of need that those individuals need is in the, in, in the low-to-mid range. So it's not really for people with severe or complex issues.
And, you know, if, if somebody were able to talk their way through screening,
Mm-hmm.
What would be the recourse if, if it appeared after somebody was already in that they were at a higher level of acuity than you were prepared for?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think that there is always a risk in that because people are assessed at a given, you know, point in time and people's situations change for the good or for the better, or for the, you know, for the good or for the worse. Um, for us, if they turn out to not be the right fit in the community, then we will work with our community partners. I mean, that's one of the benefits United Way has is that we have great relationships with, uh, the organizations in community to find out a better solution for that, whether that's working with social development or working with, you know, Outflow or what those other options are. So for sure, what we're not going to do is just turn that person out and have them back be homeless again. But we'll make sure that we can get them placed in a spot that is able to meet their level of needs.
Okay, and, thank you. And my second question is, um, I'd like to ask you to spend a little further, some of the concerns we heard earlier had to do with, um, it not being a, a dry community. Um, and you mentioned, you know, what, can't remember if it was tonight or at PAC, but somebody can do in their own home what they do in their own home, like the rest of our neighborhoods. But in our, in our neighborhoods, needles were a great concern. It's also not appropriate for somebody who might live in a neighborhood to be using in public and leaving their
Right.
garbage, their bottles, their needles. So is, is that connected to your community standards? And can you talk about that a little bit and that fear that the neighbors have?
Yeah, that'll absolutely be connected to our community standard. So I think what I did say at the previous meeting is, you know, like, we all get to do in our home what we want. These individuals will get to do, you know, what they want in their homes, just as we all get to make those choices. But there certainly will be, um, rules and standard for, for the public space. So if you're going to be out using the community garden or if you're going to be coming into the shared space or going into the laundry room, then that, th- those activities would not be permitted, um, in those spaces. So it very much is limited to you doing that in your own home, just like, I think that would be fairly similar here, that you wouldn't be allowed to do that. I think the other thing is that, once we house people, they're no longer homeless. They now have a home. I think part of the challenge that we're facing in the city every day, um, and I know needles are an issue. I also work in Waterloo Village, so I'm, I'm aware of the challenges, is that people are living on the streets. They don't have a place to safely consume alcohol or, you know, or to use. And so now we're going to put people into a home where they have a safe space to do that. They are not going to have to go and find a park to do that in. But also, we're going to make sure that we have those supports there and ready for them to make sure that they're safe, but also to make sure that if they want to seek recovery and if they want to work on that, that they have those supports available to them to help. them to help them do that. But the first thing we need to do is get people sheltered. We need to have people in a home. They cannot possibly start to take that step forward when they're living in a tent.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Councilor Redd. One, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask you, can you speak a little bit to like your community standards, requirements, and like, when somebody's outside of the neighborhood, is there any way to, to hold an expectation for your residents?
I mean, I think certainly for us, we would, we, we, we hope, I think as Marcel does, that our tenants are going to also be really good community members. So I think, I don't, I think just like in any other housing development or apartment building, like, that would, you know, there's apartments that are just across the street on Allerdale. So if somebody from an apartment there is out, you know, vandalizing or stealing from the community, I'm not sure that that would, that, that would be, they would be, the owner of that apartment building, for example, would be held accountable. But I think for us, we are going to have those supports on site. And I think certainly if there are problems in the community, we want to, we would want to know about them, and we would want to work with that individual to help try to, you know, to solve that problem. If it's a police issue, it would obviously be a police issue, and that's who, who would be involved in that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little familiar with some of the programming that the 12 Neighbors does. So, I mean, it would only seem right that to go through the programming, people would have to be not getting in trouble with the law, for example, right? I also wanted to ask you if you think there's any opportunity for our residents that you're having in, in your community to build mixed neighborhood? Is there any opportunity for that?
I think, so for us, part of the, part of when we're doing our tenant selection is about trying to find the right mix of people to be in that community that are going to, that are going to work all together. I think some of what we get to see when we go to 12 Neighbors is that you have people who are employed and who are living there and, and are paying full rent. You have people who are maybe have a much, you know, coming more recently out of homelessness. And we do generally sort of start to create that sense of a mixed community. You know, an ideal scenario in the best practice would be a mixed income community. But again, to build that in a, in a way that accommodates seven, accommodates 75 people who are homeless, we've got to build something that's three times that size, and really think that out. And it's also more difficult to provide those wraparound supports if we've got people, you know, in all different places, in all different places in the city. And some of the, some people need that time to settle into a home where they don't have, where they can sort of heal on their own, and they don't have neighbors right beside them. That's one of the benefits of the tiny home as well. It's to sort of give them some dignity and some space.
Well, people working is going to motivate other people to work too, and to build their lives. So that's great.
May I, Councilor? Just one of the other projects that we're involved with is a rural home rental and mixed, also purchase, a home, ownership, pardon me, I lost my, I lost my word there, an ownership rental community. And so just as Alexia was speaking about the extent of the problem, you know, United Way is committed to this problem now. And in the, we've talked about being here for 100 years, for like decades to come. So we're also looking at other models of communities and neighborhoods that would be helpful to this, to this particular, to St. John Kings and Charlotte Counties. So we're definitely open for, for future projects as well.
Thank you. Deputy, you got the last word? Can you wrap us up?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll be very quick. So just two quick things. Ones, people would be wondering, obviously, out there, what's the cost, somebody going in there? Is it 30% of their income?
Yeah, 30% of their income.
Okay. And the other thing is, I was interested when you said that you visited businesses in the area. After you gave your talk, what was the response? Was it?
I think overall, the response was very positive. So we went around and knocked on doors to, to the residents in the neighborhood, and as well as lots of the local businesses, as well as having meetings with some of the, you know, more nearby, like TD Insurance and CAA, when, going in and having meetings. And overwhelmingly, people are supportive of this project.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right. Is there anyone here, I'll ask again, who would like to speak in favor of the project? Or would like to just support the project? Do you want to say you support it? You can come down and just say, well, I support what I've heard. Just give us your name, or if you'd like to just, if you have anything different? We've heard quite a bit about the project, so I'll get your name and address.
Hi, guys. Misty Schofield, I work with Fresh Art. Mel asked me to come here tonight. When I started housing people in St. John in 2018, we had 82 people on the by names list. In 2024 December, we had 396 people. 242 of those people are chronically homeless. Chronically homeless individuals are people who have spent six months or more in homelessness. We have people in St. John that have spent years in homelessness. Evidence shows that the longer somebody is homeless, the harder it is for them to get out of it. Being homeless is traumatic. As of December, when we had 396 individuals who had experienced one day of homelessness, we had approximately 154 who were newly homeless. Fresh Art's outreach team is seeing two to five new individuals who we've never met before, who have never experienced homelessness. Housing is crucial to solve this issue, and we need all kinds of different solutions. There's Housing First programs, programs like these. In order to address this issue, we have to have housing. And we need to have housing as quickly as possible, because as the numbers grow, we haven't begun to see, to see the peak of this issue. Two to five people every week. So Fresh Art fully supports the Sunnyside, and we absolutely support the low, mid acuity. We need all kinds of different projects for all kinds of different people in St. John who are experiencing homelessness.
Thanks, Misty. All right, I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the project. Come on down. Oh, Minister Hickey, come right over.
Good evening, Your Worship, Members of Council. Glad to be here today. David Hickey, 48 Waterloo Street. I wanted to take a moment to highlight specifically in my new role as Minister of Housing, the importance of projects like this, and thank David and Steve and the team at the United Way for their work, and Paul, of course, in leading the project, for how important these are across the province. We have 2,000 people sleeping on the street tonight in New Brunswick, and projects like this work to make that number lower, and work to find the real long-term solutions to solve the housing and homelessness crisis in this province. Very eager to support this. I was in Bathurst today, and have community members begging for a project like this, begging for someone to step up in their community and respond to this situation with the urgency it deserves, and with, with the same level of planning and thought that's been put into this. I think a key part of these communities are, what's been talked about with the leadership of the United Way, is that they're managed, and that they're supported with that management and with that staff. We see that in the success of Marcel's project at 12 Neighbors. Having that managed team on the ground ensures the success of projects like this, and ensures the cohesion in neighborhoods wherever they are. But more of this will come, because my government, and our government, is very supportive of these, and will continue to roll out the solutions at every part of solving homelessness. And we know that this isn't the only solution. This is part of the solution. Other parts of the solution are things like Merit House, and that's being built on Waterloo Street and things like that. So we know that they all play into the bigger solution, and this fits a small piece of that. But more will come, because we need to respond to that. And my aim is to cut chronic homelessness in half in the next three years. So that's what we're after, and appreciate your support on this tonight. Thanks.
Appreciate you being here, Minister. Thanks for dropping into your old stomping grounds here. Okay, Linnea, did you, where you were going to come down? I like that. Two minutes, Minister Hickey, you did a good job. That was quick.
Hi, my name is Linnea Astefan. I currently live in Redhead, but actually grew up on Fern Street. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but this is an issue that is important to me. I'm very familiar with Fern Hill Cemetery, practically, you know, learned how to ride my bike in there, pick berries, whatever. And I delivered newspapers all around Westmoreland Road, and I have been familiar with the area where they want to put this project. I've walked up there lots of times. So I, I, as some council know, I've helped feed homeless with the Saturday Night Outreach, and some of you have come with me for that, including Minister Hickey. So I also have a relative that's homeless, and he was one of those people that was hit by a train recently. So a project like this, if it had existed beforehand, maybe he would have been, you know, in a better space where this would not have happened. So I just jotted things down. I wasn't ready to speak tonight on this. I, I think we need to remember that the people that we're talking about are human beings, and I'm concerned about some of the comments that I've heard tonight. It feels like we discriminate against this population. And I think that these people deserve dignity and a roof over their head to have the very basics. So I'm speaking in favor of this project, and I hope it gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the project. I'll get you to come forward and give us your names and addresses or relationship to the project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us tonight. Look, I think St. John has a tremendous opportunity. Sorry, Steve Belier, and I'm also a business owner on Ross Avenue. I have a large business. And David Alston. And we're kind of co-collaborators in this whole thing, so it's our fault that you're all here tonight. But about a year ago, I was invited up to Frederickton to see 12 Neighbors, and just like everybody else in St. John, driving around, looking at what, what could be done, what, what should be done, what, what can we do? And somebody suggested that I go up to 12 Neighbors and meet Marcel and, and see that operation. And I was touched. I was, I was humbled by what I saw and meeting some people that lived there. Not what I expected at all. And my head quickly went to, how can we bring something like this to St. John? How could we scale this up if, if it was successful beyond St. John? And work with Marcel to take the best practices that he's learned over the last three or four years and apply them here, and do, do a St. John version of this. I was introduced to David roughly at that same time, who had the same mindset. And together, we began to kind of map out what this, what this could and would and should look like. We, we talked to many, many agencies in St. John, all of whom are still and continue to be supportive. United Way, we felt, was the best positioned to help own the property, run the property, manage the property, and scale this beyond St. John's borders. And I think that's my point tonight is, we have a tremendous opportunity to show what we can do. It does have to be well-managed. There's a lot of eyes on this, but I think we can show the country how this could work, and how we can scale this up. So let's make an exemplary community. We want to be good neighbors. I hear the concerns of all the neighbors and the local businesses, and I get it. We will be good neighbors, and we want this to be exemplary, so.
And I'll just add, David Alston. We, when we started this journey, we also said, okay, we need to find a spot. What's the best spot that we can find? So we asked Marcel, what are the key components that you need in a property? And number one, close to a food source, and one that's affordable for people that they can walk to. Number two, less fruit. Number three, ideally, it has to be close to services that allows us to, to build something and not be super expensive. This is not a prevent, a for-profit venture. It's a charitable venture. So, and there were other instances as well, in terms of having the ability to have a space that was big enough to support a number of homes, significant portion. We won't be as big as 12 Neighbors with the 100, but 70 to 75 is still a pretty good number, to be able to pick a dent in the, the amount of folks that are continuing to increase. So we literally set off on probably three months of looking at different properties. We had multiple people literally doing different exercises, sometimes literally taking a look at all the food sources and drawing a 25-minute walk around each one, and then looking at all the properties that were for sale, but also ones that were big enough and had the right services available. The other thing, by the way, sidewalks too. I mean, there were some that were like, oh, that's pretty good. No sidewalks and a kilometer away from services, it's just not going to work. Every single time we did this, it kept coming back to this one spot. And we were fortunate that, once we were able to land on that spot, that St. John Energy was willing to step forward and be a great community partner, and, and, and find a way to give us the portion of the land. And also, it was, we were very fortunate that Steve happened to know the owners, had worked with the owners many, many years ago, and of the other larger piece. And we set off on many months of going back and forth and sharing our vision for what was possible. And again, very fortunate that they were willing to make, make it available to us to purchase. So, so that's really how we came to this, and it's been a long journey. And we hope that today, we will be able to kickstart, kickstart it with a new milestone to be able to move forward with your support. So thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. All right. I think it's that it for people who would like to speak in favor of the project. I'll ask again, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the project? And I'll ask for the third time, if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the proposal. And then I will, I will close the public hearing now. And I could, I'll ask my, we can probably, I'll ask my crew, my team, if there's, does anyone have any clarifying questions for staff at this point in time? If you don't have any clarifying questions for staff, we can go, are we good? Oh, Councilor Sullivan, sorry. Or we can move right into remarks, or whatever you want to do over there, Councilor?
Well, I don't have any clarifying questions. I was ready to move first reading, but I'd like to make a remark.
Go ahead.
So, point, I want to thank Linnea for her unplanned words, because it actually prompted something in my head that I had forgotten from my education somewhere. But the New Brunswick Human Rights Code says that social condition is something that we don't discriminate against. And I just want to thank Linnea for reminding me, you know, folks that, somebody suffers a social or economic disadvantage because of their source of income, occupation, level of education. At the end of the day, the property planning conversation tonight was not around a tiny home community. It was about who is in that tiny home community. We don't discriminate against those folks. We should be supporting those folks. So I'm ready to make the motion to move forward and get on with this.
Okay. Got a seconder over there? Yeah, okay. Councilor Killen?
I just want to, you know, make a clarifying comment, because there was a bit of exchange here. But everyone deserves a safe space. And my comments earlier reflect to me, the Westmoreland Home Area is a shining example of what density and affordable housing can do. It's a beautiful place. And I really don't see how the negative connotations that have been associated with, you know, mobile parks over the years, there's all kinds of fodder in our community, in our, like, sort of social zeitgeist, if you will, that seems similar to the kind of negative connotations around Sunnyside today. So I don't see how that tone is different, and why we should be judging communities, to Councilor Sullivan's point, based on who is in them. Under United Way's leadership, there is more than an excellent chance this will be just as successful as Westmoreland Home Community, as any other community, where there are people living close together in their respective homes. So I'm, I'm just so thrilled to see us moving forward tonight, hopefully with a project that is going to mean so much to so many people over many, many years. So I appreciate hearing from the community. I appreciate hearing from the proponents. And I just think this is just another additional successful, or community in waiting that's going to be a great success. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Redd, one, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we go to vote. So, I mean, I'm, I'm really happy to hear about the wraparound services that are going to be built to, you know, to the needs of, of our residents, that, that would end up going into the tiny home community. I think that it's really important for people to remember that a home is actually a human right. And we absolutely need to have more housing. This is like, I think Misty had said, one of many different types of support systems that I think that we need to have. Some would need to be like, you know, have a lot more staff on to be Some would need to be, like, you know, have a lot more staff on to be able to look after high-acuity people that might need help more often, right? You know, I'd love to see this turn into more of a mixed neighborhood, where people are maybe renting affordable homes eventually. That would be lovely. But still, you know, this is subsidized, people are going to be working. I understand concerns, though, at the same time. You know, this area from, you know, Hampton Inn down to the Field House around McDonald's includes our tax base of $240 million worth of business. And there's about to be a project go up that's another $150 million. That's a big part of our tax base. It's a huge part of St. John's tax base. But I agree that if you have the right managed community, this can be done completely right. Would there be any hiccups? There might be. But I do feel confident in United Way that they'll be there to look after any of those hiccups and hopefully build really, really strong relationships with the business community and neighbors that are close by. And I hope that the community will kind of reach out to them and embrace them so that we, you know, as a community, we can do that, so that we can look after our residents that need housing. And, you know, I think finally, in the end, you know, I have a business in the area. I'll tell you that I did go to 12 neighbors in Fredericton the end of January and took a look, and I needed to see what is it going to look like? Like, we don't have a tiny home community in St. John. So what is it going to look like? And it was absolutely beautiful. So when somebody asks me, would you want this next to your house? My answer is yes. I absolutely would, as long as it's managed well, which I think that it will be. So I personally want to be part of the solution. And so, you know, I definitely will be there for the community if there's any concerns that come up, and hopefully, we can help everybody build better relationships so that we can make this very successful.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Low, and then Counselor Harris, do you have your hand up, Counselor?
Second motion.
Okay, Counselor Low, second motion. All right, Counselor Harris, over to you.
Yeah, Your Worship, I have not been to 12 neighbors, but I, you know, as you know and many other people know, I've been very busy in this city trying to find pathways for affordable housing. I've got two projects on the go, some are vacant buildings. And the one thing I can say is this, this is everybody's problem. When I hear residents talk about liability, and I understand where you're coming from, but we need to understand, in 2017, when I started working on housing issues in the city, there was nowhere near this amount of people in desperate need of affordable housing or stable housing. And this problem will only get worse. There's so few of us involved in this project. So it brings me a lot of hope to see the United Way involved with this. We need 60, 70 more people at every level, right? I don't have huge pocketbooks to be able to, you know, fund up my own projects, and I know many other people in this city are working on projects, I think of Forward House and others. They don't have deep pockets to be able to pull off, you know, the needs of the city, but we need dozens and dozens of residents. So I really hope that, I'm reminded of Edmonton, when they done away with all exclusionary zoning in their city, and it was met with massive opposition from residents. And years later, they went back and they interviewed those same people, and they had nothing but good things to say about the amount of mixed neighborhoods that got developed because of those changes. And that's what I'm really hoping for, for the residents around this, that, you know, this may seem like a scary change, but, you know, getting involved, getting our hands dirty with the problem, picking up a hammer and swinging a hammer once in a while will go a long way to make this thing work and ensure that the residents that move here and the United Way itself have the tools it needs to succeed. So I'm fully supportive.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll just wrap it up quickly and say, we're here tonight because we're looking at a land use issue, and it's evolved into something else. And so I think we hear that, that the communities are nervous because they've seen what goes on, but we have tents and we have encampments, and we can't leave that. We have to be a community where we try to move people forward, and I think this is it. I'm grateful to have, you know, two people who've picked up that baton. Now we've got United Way that's, you know, with them. We've got the minister over here of NB Housing and the government, the provincial government. So we've got the team, I think we've got the right team together. It's a strong team, that's heard, that's heard from us. We all have the same fears. I live uptown. I see it every day. I've been there 40 years, I see it every day. And no, it can't continue. So how do we break it? How do we change it? How do we impact it? That's our jobs. We're leaders here in the city, and those are our citizens. So I would be supportive of it as well, but I don't think I'm going to have to break a tie tonight. Doesn't sound like, but anyway, so I'm going to call the question here. We've got the motion on the floor. John, correct?
Thank you, Your Worship. In this case, there's two bylaws that need approval, so municipal plan amendment and zoning. And so we require four motions, and we have a motion to approve first reading by title of the municipal plan.
Okay. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Norton and Counselor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
Okay, so the zoning bylaw amendment, I need a motion to approve first reading by title. Counselor Darling and Counselor Ogden on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John.
And I need a motion to approve second reading by title. The deputy and Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion for a break?
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Low. Five minutes.
Had to squeeze it in. Got to follow the law. Got to follow the law. Got to follow the law.
Okay, everyone, can I call the meeting back to order? I need my boo. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Good. Okay. Okay, this next one should be quick. Not that one, there's one in between the two of them. Yep. Okay, I just need my city manager back. Oh, Councilor Killen, I think she's gone. Oh, there she is, online. Okay, Councilor Killen will be doing this one online. Councilor Harris is online.
Glad he wasn't good enough, Mayor.
Okay. I'm gonna grab my C E O. Okay, City Clerk. Next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next item is 9.2 on your agenda, and it's a public hearing for stop-up enclosure for Sunnyside Avenue right-of-way.
General Counsel, passing this over to you for the intro, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, Members of Counsel. This evening's public hearing for the stop-up enclosure of an undeveloped portion of Sunnyside Avenue is tied to the previous public hearing this evening, and was conditional on that application of the previous public hearing being successful. Since Counsel has approved the application for the previous public hearing, the closing of a portion of this undeveloped public street will be necessary for the development, and Mr. Blair McPhee, real estate manager, will provide a brief overview of this application this evening.
Good evening, Counsel. Public notice is given on Thursday, January 23rd through the City of St. John's website. This stop-up enclosure of an 8,000-square-foot or square-meter portion of Sunnyside Avenue will be conveyed to 684401 NB Limited, subsidiary of United Way and Maritimes, to allow for the development of the Sunnyside tiny home community. So on the screen, I just have the map location of where the stop-up enclosure is. And there is a memorandum of understanding between the new landowner and St. John Energy to allow access across the property to the St. John Energy Power Station. Access to the Rogers Tower from the new landowner's property will remain unchanged from what it is today, and access to the Bell Tower property will remain unchanged. It's recommended that common counsel pass first and second reading of the amendment to a bylaw respecting closing of roads, streets, or highways in the City of St. John enacted March 11, 2019, for the purpose of closing the 8,000-square-meter portions of Sunnyside Avenue.
Thank you. Okay, I will now open the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak against this proposal. I'll ask for, the second time, if there's anyone here who would like to speak against this proposal. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anything here, anyone here who would like to speak against the proposal. Not hearing anyone, I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the proposal for the stop-up enclosure. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the stop-up enclosure. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the stop-up enclosure. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask staff, or my team, if anyone has any questions for staff. Counselor Low, sorry, Counselor Stewart's up first. Counselor Low.
Move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Stewart.
Second.
Excellent. Okay. So, City Clerk, we need two motions, so approve first reading by title, so we've got a mover and a seconder on that. And I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A bylaw respecting the closing of roads, streets, or highways in the City of St. John.
And I need a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Bylaw respecting the closing of roads, streets, or highways in the City of St. John.
Next item, City Clerk.
And next is 9.3 on your agenda. It's a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with a planning advisory committee report and a staff presentation for 221, 251, 271 Lancaster Avenue.
Okay, I'm sending this one over to Commissioner Pofmroff for the introduction, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and Members of Counsel. This evening's last public hearing is for an amendment to the zoning bylaw and rezoning that was submitted by J.D. Irving Limited for land located at 221, 251, and 271 Lancaster Avenue. The applicant has applied to rezone the proposed parking area to a special zone that would allow for the development of a commercial parking lot with reduced development standards, in addition to those uses permitted in the park zone for use by the Irving Pulp and Paper Mill site. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee. Staff is recommending denial of the application. The planning advisory committee recommended approving the application as submitted. The council package includes the staff recommendation with alternative recommendations for your consideration. For this evening's staff presentation, there will be three speakers. Mark Reed, the senior planner, and lead on the file will begin the presentation, followed by a brief presentation by Tim O'Reilly, the city's director of public works and traffic engineer. Punkaj Nalavde, the director of community planning and housing, will conclude the staff presentation with some additional commentary on the file for council's consideration. I'll now turn it over to Mark Reed for the staff presentation on the file. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. One of the points I think planning staff would like to make tonight is that this isn't about the Next Gen project. That project is proceeding on the mill site, and it's a permitted use of the mill site. The question before Counsel this evening is parking on the adjacent Woolly Stuk Park site and the former Centra Care site. The application seeks to develop a 500-stall surface parking lot on a portion of the Woolly Stuk Park site. The parking area would support construction activities for construction workers on the Next Gen project at the Irving Pulp and Paper Mill on the opposite side of Bridge Road. Following the Next Gen project, the parking area would support construction workers employed at upcoming maintenance shutdowns at the facility. This is a 500-stall parking lot to support an industrial use, and staff differ with the applicant's interpretation of the municipal plan. In terms of city context, the property is located on the west side of the city, close to the Sims Corner intersection. The area along Lancaster Avenue has a mix of commercial and residential uses. This here photo shows an aerial context of the area in black that is subject of the application. And then just to the right of that area along Lancaster Avenue, you have a commercial area on the north side, and you have a residential area on the south side. This is a photo of the existing entrance to the site from Lancaster Avenue. The city's municipal plan has the site designated as park and natural area, and this permits a range of conservation and appropriate recreational land uses. Staff are of the opinion it is not an appropriate designation for commercial or industrial uses, and approval of the proposal would require the lands to be redesignated. In terms of the scale of the parking area, the proposed parking area is 500 spaces on 3.2 hectares of the Woolly Stuk Park site. And as comparison, we looked at the area and the adjacent, or the area in red shown on the map at Lancaster Mall, that's a 1.7 hectare parcel that provides 432 spaces, just for council's comparison. In terms of policy alignment, Policy LU25 of the plan establishes permitted activities in the park and natural areas designation. A parking area of this scale to support a non-park use is not an appropriate use from staff's perspective. Policy LU4 does provide criteria for staff when we look at a redesignation of the future land use designation that would be required to support the site. And there's four or five different key parameters that we looked at. The first one was consistency with the plan intent. We note that the scale of the proposed 500-stall parking lot for an industrial use represents an expansion of the industrial use into the existing park and closer to a mixed-use residential and commercial neighborhood. This is inconsistent with the park-oriented designation in the municipal plan. Policy LU4 also speaks to necessity due to the lack of land. Staff note it is not necessary to relocate parking on a different site. Its structured parking could be constructed on the mill site. This would address the parking demands without impacting Woolly Stuk Park. With respect to enhancement of the community and quality of life, we note the use of the site for a 500-stall parking lot across multiple shifts at the site is likely to reduce or eliminate the community park-oriented function of Woolly Stuk Park, currently enjoyed by the adjacent communities and the city as a whole. With respect to efficient use of the city's infrastructure, the proposal does not leverage the potential to develop the site for developments that could address the broader needs of the city, such as housing or tax base expansion, which would also, and other potential developments that would enhance neighborhood livability. In terms of the impact in use, impact on use and enjoyment of adjacent areas, staff note that increased traffic from the proposal has a potential to affect the surrounding areas. And finally, looking at the appropriateness of the use within the land use designation, the scale of the parking area does not align with the intent of the park and natural area, and the addition of a standalone parking lot to support an industrial use does not align with the surrounding neighborhood context along Lancaster Avenue. In terms of policy context, we note that the parking area would be located between 60 and 70 meters from dwellings in the surrounding residential neighborhood along Lancaster Avenue. In terms of current zoning, the property is currently zoned park. The park, the park zone does not support a standalone parking lot of this scale. Traffic considerations, my colleague, Mr. Tim O'Reilly, will speak to that later in the proposal. As with any other application that we undertake, we did public engagement on this. Letters were mailed out to property owners within 100 meters of the site on January 7th. And as of this presentation, or at the time that we presented at P E C, we had roughly about 40 letters. There have been some additional letters received in the past week or so that are included in the council packet tonight. The applicant also did an open house for the project back in October, and we had the public presentation for the municipal plan on October the 1st. Tonight's public hearing was advertised on our website as well, to provide additional notification to the public. Staff's recommendation, we've outlined three options with respect to the application. The first would be to deny the rezoning and defeat the proposed bylaw. Option two would be rezoning of the site to a special zone, Special Zone 6. This would allow for the uses established in the park zone to continue on the site with the addition of a commercial parking lot to support the proponent's proposal. This zone would also reduce the development standards as requested by the proponent for the parking lot, which would allow for a gravel parking area without internal landscaping or curbing, much like we would find at other commercial lots developed in the city. Option three would be an approval with conditions, and that would involve a municipal plan amendment to redesignate the site from park and natural area to stable area on Schedule A of the plan and stable commercial on Schedule B, and also involve a rezoning of the site from park to general commercial, which would allow for the commercial parking lot. And that would also require the applicant to respect our development standards for commercial parking lots and install curbing, paving, and internal parking lot landscaping. As well, option three, Section 59 conditions could be imposed as directed by common counsel in accordance with the Community Planning Act. These could include completion of improvements to the park as outlined by the applicant in their submissions, the applicant's continued participation in stakeholder working groups related to rail traffic and improvements at the Sims Corner intersection, the installation of sidewalk along sections of Bridge Road, and proportionate improvements at the Sims Corner intersection, which would include funding and engineering assessment and intersection design study to determine the optimal configuration of the intersection and contributing to the cost of the implementation of future intersection improvements. One of the other possible conditions is the applicant's traffic study highlights a staggering of shifts exiting the parking lot to better manage traffic that could also be imposed as a Section 39 condition by common counsel. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Tim O'Reilly, to provide a brief overview on traffic considerations.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. Common counsel likely knows I've been the traffic engineer for the city for 17 years now. I know in all aspects of transportation, and particularly with respect to development, the word balance always comes up. We want to support development growth in our community, and we want to do it in a way that protects and respects the surrounding community. Over those years, we've had plenty of opportunities to find that balance with respect to development. The inputs on those are typically a traffic study that's generated as part of the project by the proponent, work on different policies related to transportation that we have with respect to our municipal transportation plan, work with our planning staff around some of the planning requirements, and also just talking to the community. You're gonna hear probably from members of the community tonight, but also in my role, I get an opportunity to talk to a lot of the community, so I know oftentimes what the issues are with respect to development before they become, before a common counsel. This is an exception, and they don't happen very often, but this is an exception. I don't have, can stand up before you this evening with a clear set of criteria to say we can make this development work in a balanced way with protecting the community. And on these slides are really a series of questions, instead of a series of statements I can normally have, that I really recommend that common counsel consider those questions in relation to approving this project. First thing I wanted to address is the nature in which the parking considerations were considered. There was an initial traffic study completed. I have it right here. It's dated May 2024. This traffic study was completed for the provincial environmental impact assessment for the mill project. As part of that project, the assumption was is all the park requirements would be considered on-site on existing IPP property. Fast forward three months, with the current proposal with respect to Woolly Stuk Park parking, another traffic study was generated. And of course, now it considers that dispersment of traffic parking not on-site anymore, but off-site at Woolly Stuk Park. So really, the conditions at which the provincial EIA was initially approved with respect to transportation has changed because the parking requirements have changed with respect to the two traffic studies. So those two traffic studies in sequence has been part of my concern with coming up with adequate recommendations with respect to this project. At the end of the day, one of the biggest impacts I want you to consider is that we're moving from a dispersment of traffic to a concentration of traffic. You'll hear with all shuts at the mill, contractors are bussed into the site instead of driving into the site. This has changed things, whether it's parking on the site or at Woolly Stuk Park, because now the contracts are becoming too, one site on their own cars, typically around the rush hours that all other traffic operates. That's a strong consideration, in my view. With respect to Sims Corner, there is a growing issue with respect to Sims Corner and a growing scale of what needs to be done with that particular intersection. It's fair to say, and I'm sure you're gonna hear from proponents tonight, that we shouldn't completely consider this project with relation to Sims Corner, and I agree with that to some respects. The challenges that we have is that some of the growth that have happened that impact Sims Corner hasn't been considered in the past. And so we're coming up to a situation where maybe Sims Corner now is at a situation where we need to do significant improvements. At what point are we gonna generate more traffic growth that's gonna supersede what the community can handle? I'll tell you, anybody that's experiencing this area in September of this year, the answer would be it's already surpassed. There was huge issues with people trying to get from the west side to the east side of St. John. So again, as I said, I don't think this project should be linked all the way to Sims Corner, but at some point, there's a breaking point at which we need to do something with Sims Corner. The other big impact of Sims Corner which you need to consider is the train traffic. The trains are expected to grow significantly in length, and that's gonna have a significant impact on Sims Corner in relation to all the other growth projections around traffic, including to this project. Like all traffic impact statements, both traffic studies estimated future service levels. It's grade A through F at an intersection, typically based on delay experienced by motorists. Both traffic studies completed a level of service impact at Sims Corner and surrounding intersections. The challenge is, is that neither intersection really considered the full, real impacts we're going to see within the next few years. The rail growth through Sims Corner was not considered in those level of service impact analysis. Other future growth we know is coming was also not considered as part of either traffic study. How is the, there's a chip plant that's going, that's going through an EIA that's been approved as well. How is that traffic gonna be accommodated through Sims Corner? How is continued growth at the Devil Road Intermodal Terminal gonna impact traffic at that intersection? Some of those considerations weren't included in either traffic study. So the real question is, which I don't have the answer to, is what will be the true service level experienced by motorists commuting in the coming years? I want to touch base again back to these two parking options for a minute. Again, onsite park was considered as part of the EIA traffic study, and of course, now we're talking about having traffic for construction going to Woolly Stuk Park. In the traffic study for the EIA, one of the recommendations of that report was to actually disperse traffic among different accesses into the Irving Pulp and Paper Mill. On the screen, and the yellow dots for them are different ways to get in and out of the mill property. So if all the parking was accommodated at the mill, it'd be four different ways to get in and out of the mill property. The red line is what's known as the Irving Road that goes underneath the Loomer Pass over towards Milford Road, and again, connects eventually onto Milford Road. There's a specific recommendation that traffic study to actually encourage contractor traffic to use that to help disperse that traffic. The challenge now we're facing, and shows in the green dot, is that construction traffic now, instead of being able to be dispersed among four different accesses on the public roadway, is now gonna be concentrated at one location at the Woolly Stuk Park in green. So overall, that onsite parking opportunities, whether it's a parking lot on-site or parking garage, weren't fully assessed relative to the Woolly Stuk Park option. The second study, again, related to Woolly Stuk Park, did talk about the improvement at the IPP accesses, because again, you're moving traffic away from the IPP property, but it comes at the expense of at least one movement on Sims Corner. What about the rest of the impacts on the transportation network when you're changing how that traffic's gonna be dispersed between what's considered with the provincial EIA versus what's before us now with respect to Woolly Stuk Park parking lot? And of course, the ultimate question is what is the better option for the community overall from a transportation perspective? Don't have the answer to that because of the process underway, but I think it's an important question council needs to consider. The other, the other consideration is some of the change rationale for system improvement recommendations related to the transportation system. The first traffic study related to provincial EIA indicated there'd be a significant volume of traffic related to the project. It also stated that the impact should only be for a few months because it was all centered around the construction, traffic around the IPP expansion project, Next Gen project. So part of that reason, the short window of impact was part of the reason why the provincial EIA did not recommend transportation improvements. So what's happening now is there's gonna be a construction of a parking lot and potentially permanent changes to the zoning designation for the property. So will the impact still be for a few months related to the new proposal before us? So if you take the same rationale from the first and second traffic study, if part of the rationale was no traffic improvements because it was short-term, what's going to be the medium to long-term impacts with what's being produced now? And should that change the recommendations with respect to the transportation system what's before you today? Don't know, but I think it's an important question and reference related between the rationale of those two project, two, two, uh, traffic studies. So really, in summary, we do have traffic being added to an area of issue and a growing issue. We looked at Sims Corner a few years ago with respect to Move S J. We identified a roundabout would handle current traffic and projected vehicle traffic going into the future. What we know now with respect to rail growth is that level of investment Sims Corner is going to be dramatically more than that projection. So with that growing issue, we, you know, how are we going to get that done with respect to taxpayer investment? That's a big question. The other major consideration is both the impacts and the options were not completely evaluated. Again, as I mentioned, there wasn't that cumulative effect with respect to different projects and how they're going to impact different intersections, including Sims Corner going forward. And those two options between onsite parking and parking at Willistock Park were not compared fully in the second traffic study once the Willistock Park consideration was made. The other telling thing is that the, the approval process between provincial and city approval, between the EIA, provincial level, and what's before you now, they were based on different considerations and scale of impact. Okay, like I said, the provincial EIA was talking about onsite parking with an opportunity to disperse traffic. The conditions have changed, so should the provincial approval change with respect to that project? It's just a question mark, but now before, before you this evening is, is a different situation than what was considered with respect to that provincial EIA. These are all questions I think council should at least consider. And again, as I said, this is a different situation, but I don't have the answers before you, but I think there are considerations council needs to make with respect to this development approval.
Good evening, your, your worship and members of council. This has been a challenging project, particularly because it's set against the backdrop of the next-gen, which is a good news story for the city. Next-gen is a major modernization effort for the applicant. It represents a one-point-one billion dollar investment by the applicant into our city. It is a positive development for the city and the industry. We are not contesting that. In terms of the approval process for the, for the next-gen project, the applicant underwent a EIA process in the spring, summer of twenty twenty-four and have received their EIA approvals from the province. The IPP site, the mill site, also has a heavy industrial zoning in place, which allows them to proceed with their next-gen proposal, including any parking-related structures on their site if that was their choice. So we need to clarify a few points for this public hearing. The applicant has held a number of engagement events, and a lot of material has been circulated in the, in the media and on social media about this reasoning project, and we want to clarify that this is not about the next-gen site. This is about the Willistock Park site that's across from it, which is today separated by Bridge Road, and all of the industrial development is sort of relegated to the north and to the south is your residential and mixed-use community. So the inclusion of Willistock Park to support next-gen is a newer development. This was not included in the EIA process last year, and the impacts of, of this change were not fully assessed in those EIA's. One of the other reasons why this is a challenging project is because what is the application in front of us? The site is designated as park, and the applicant wants to keep that designation as a park, but is proposing a five-hundred stall commercial parking lot within that. And that really is challenging for us because we want the planning framework to represent the land use that is on the ground. If it is a parking lot, we want the site to be commercial or industrial or something else. If it is a park meant for recreation, then we want the designation to be park. So it represents a conflict on that front. And the other front, this application is asking for a rezoning to a special zone, which is a lot, which will allow them to reduce the development standard. And the reason why that is challenging is because we have to be transparent and consistent with all of the developments in the community that, you know, abide by development standards for commercial parking lots. So those are the real conflicting issues of this particular application. So as it relates to the Willistock Park, it is important to ask some fundamental planning questions to guide this discussion that we're going to have this evening. The questions are going to focus on land use suitability, development impacts, and economic benefits. As it relates to land use, one of the key considerations for this proposal is whether a commercial parking lot is an appropriate use for Willistock Park. How does it align with cities' long-term plans and the needs of the community? What are the development impacts of such a proposal to the adjacent infrastructure? And Director Riley just spoke about the impact on Sims Corner and the residential community across from this development? And what is, what is the application offering in terms of mitigation measures towards that infrastructure and benefits to the community? The proposal does present potential economic benefits to both the city and the broader community. We are asking how does the reasoning of Willistock Park address those council priorities such as job creation, increasing tax base, and other economic opportunities? Those are all true of next-gen. We are questioning whether those are true of the reasoning of Willistock Park. Historically, Willistock Park was the location of the center care facility. This is a picture from back when the development was onsite, and in some ways, it shows the potential of what could happen with a site like this that is a waterfront site. The site served as an institutional use and played a key role in separating industrial activity north of Bridge Row, Bridge Road from the residential community of Lancaster to the south. Today, the site is designated as a park and natural area under the city's long-term municipal plan, Plan S J, and it has become a community-oriented park. With its iconic waterfront location, it has also become a popular tourism destination and is recognized with the identity of St. John. Importantly, it also continues to act as a buffer and transition between heavy industrial use and the residential community, which is a key tenet, a key principle of land use planning, which is to separate these uses by other land uses that can act as a buffer. The rezoning proposal in front of us today to locate a five-hundred-stall commercial-scale parking lot with employees expected to access this site across multiple shifts in a day represents significant impact. Even the application recognizes the need to stagger the exiting of employees from this site so that the traffic situation doesn't become completely untenable. The scale of this parking lot and the anticipated volume of vehicles circulating around Lancaster Avenue makes it difficult to imagine how Willistock Park can continue to function as a community-oriented park. The scale and magnitude of this development in some ways can be perceived as an expansion of the industrial footprint onto the adjacent community, and this is not consistent with the land use designation nor contemplated within our long-term plans, Plan S J. Regarding development impacts, Director Riley spoke to the TIA studies associated with the application do not provide a complete picture of the cumulative project, cumulative impacts of the projected industrial growth at the site and the vicinity, not just, not just the mill, but also other developments. We did raise this concern during the provincial EIA review process, but the traffic study also does not evaluate other alternatives such as onsite parking structures, which seems like a viable option, was something considered by the applicant, but is not evaluated through the, through the technical studies. As a result of these incomplete studies, the application does not address any necessary improvements to the adjacent infrastructure, particularly at Sims Corner. The city's transportation plan, Move S J, contemplates the need for a roundabout at Sims Corner to address current traffic conditions, and that is prior to the industrial growth that the city has been experiencing. For that roundabout, the city council has capped municipal contributions in three million dollars. Given the industrial growth that the city has experienced over the past five years, it is now likely that a higher-order infrastructure is required, and based on the principle that those who benefit from the infrastructure should bear the cost, staff's assessment is that a comprehensive study is required to fully assess that cumulative impact and then to define the proportionate contributions of the stakeholders benefiting from it, and the mill would be just one of the stakeholders. We do recognize the wider problem, but we do need a study to define what those proportionate contributions are, otherwise it falls to the taxpayers. Regarding next-gen, we understand it represents a significant one-point-one billion dollar investment, which is going to, uh, going to benefit the mill by replacing equipment, improving their productivity, enhancing energy efficiency, and environmental performance for the whole city. We are fully supportive of that. But we also understand a lot of these benefits are benefits to the applicant. Spending on material and labor during construction is expected to generate economic benefits for both the province and the federal governments through income taxes and sales taxes. In terms of benefits to the city, we understand the property assessment of the mill site is expected to increase by one-point-six million. However, only a small portion of that increase will benefit the city. And this is particularly important because if the city has to bear the cost of any future infrastructure upgrades resulting from that, the question in front of us is the project making enough contributions towards that, and that really is the crux of this discussion. In conclusion, staff are recommending council deny the application and defeat the proposed bylaw for the following reasons. Incom- incompatible land use that is inconsistent with the parks and natural areas of the designation of the municipal plan. Incomplete traffic studies that do not address the cumulative impacts to adjacent infrastructure. Application does not address any infrastructure contributions towards Sims Corner. Rezoning of Willistock Park to a gravel lot does not represent sufficient benefits, nor addresses cities' priorities such as increased tax base, housing, long-term job creation. The mill site can accommodate a parking structure comfortably, which can offer a safer, efficient, onsite, environmentally responsible solution to their parking needs while limiting impacts to the adjacent community. So the, the presence of a solution on their side is a key factor in why we think it should, the impact should not be spread around to other sites. So those are the five or six reasons that represent our evaluation. And before closing, as Senior Planner Mark Reed said, staff have brought forward a number of alternative for council's consideration, and the reason for bringing them forward is we expect the decision can go in any way, but there are some real impacts to be considered, and some of those alternatives are just intended to, to provoke some discussion around how to mitigate those impacts. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions of council. Thank you.
I'll get, uh, we'll do the questions later on. I'll, I'll start with the public hearing, all right? Thank you to all three of you for that. So before I open the public hearing, I just wanted to take a moment to address a few things. So first, we were aware of an interview which aired on CBC and with, which Mr. Mosher of JDI, the applicant this evening, said that he met with a number of members of PAC and council to address their concerns. So in order to maintain the public confidence in the land use application process in which council is the decision-maker, council wants to make it clear to the public that although some members of councils were invited to meet with the applicants ahead of the public hearing, no counselors met with the applicant outside of the PAC process. I do understand, however, that JDI officials have met with PAC members following the PAC hearing. That's all, that's, that's all fine. The city is aware that Mr. Mosher's comments in the CBC interview would cause the public to question the process and wanted to provide the context to his comments, just to clarify those facts before opening the public hearing. And also, we understand that the PAC hearing was lengthy, and we expect that this evening's hearing will be equally as long. There are limitations in the council's procedural bylaw on the duration of a council meeting. Therefore, I'm going to ask each speaker this evening to be mindful if, of not repeating comments that they've, that have already been made by others. If a speaker's comments are the same as comments which have already been made, we ask that you sure come to the podium, be part of the public record, state your name, address, and advise whether you support the, or object to the application and for reason, for reasons that have already been explained by previous speakers. So I just will say too, for the public, that the kit's nine-hundred-and-twelve pages tonight, five-hundred-and-sixty-nine of those pages are this, uh, are this application. So there's a lot of reading there. We've all read through the kit. There's quite a few letters that we've received as well, and some that followed after the kit was printed. Those we got through email over the last couple of days as well. So I will open the public hearing, and usually I always ask for if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the proposal first, so then I go to who want to speak in favor of it. So I'll start with my regular routine. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the, the proposal? All right. Do you have your bit? Get you, give us your name and your address, if you don't mind.
Excuse me. My name is David Ryan. I live at seven-twelve Dominion Park Road, St. John West. Thank you to council again. I don't know how you do it. I'd also like to thank JDI and Irving Pulp and Paper for the investment in the city. There's no question that JDI has done a lot for the city of St. John and this project will over a short period of time while their construction is going on, it's going to help Romanos, it's going to help Tim Hortons on the west side. No question, I have no issue with that. My concern relates to primarily Sims Corner. Your staff basically went through most of my points, and I am not, in the interest of time, I'm not going to go back through and read my points. I will, though your worship address, it was me that brought forward the issue with the CBC interview, and not only was the comment made that they met with members of PAC and common counsel, but he mentioned, that's Mr. Mosher in the interview, mentioned that they addressed the concerns. And to me, that was the bigger part of it, and, you know, hopefully, all of you know that the role of council is to keep an open mind during a public hearing and is to make decisions that benefit the city as a whole, not just one industrial complex. So again, Sims Corner, Mr. Mosher has, I've heard him say it twice, he does not understand why this project has anything to do with Sims Corner. My response to that be is what does the provincial highway system have to do with running chips to the west side of St. John? It's exactly the same thing. We as westsiders, myself, my original family home is a Manawaginish Road, I'm now at Dominion Park, I've been here over sixty years. Mr. Mosher mentioned that he's been here thirty-eight years as a resident. I will guess that he doesn't live on the west side, and he hasn't realized the traffic implications of the backup to the feeder roads of Sims Corner. And again, the city of St. John, September twenty twenty-four, you've developed a position paper which you presented to all the political parties, where you identified Sims Corner as a critical intersection needing attention. Members of council have all publicly over the last year expressed the wording, whatever the right word is, that Sims Corner is an issue that needs to be worked on. To put more traffic into Sims Corner is going to be a city concern. In, on page five-thirty-one of that almost thousand-page document that brought us here to council, it clearly states from the IPP side of things that safety regarding Sims Corner is a responsibility of the city of St. John and not related to the operation of the pulp mill. So you're here today to make a decision about safety. And if any of you have tried to cross the intersection like students do when they're on their way to Harbor, Harborview High School, or going to Tim Hortons or wherever, crossing the intersections is difficult. Trying to drive a bicycle through the intersection, I've been knocked off a bicycle in that intersection years ago, and driving a car from Lancaster Avenue to try and get onto Main West is a crapshoot at best. And if somebody's coming from Bridge Street to turn left up into Lancaster, and they don't understand the intricacies of that intersection where there's a couple stops and a few goes, there was a, there was an accident, I think last week or the week before at that intersection. Again, feeder road, Sims Corner is a feeder intersection for Chesley Drive, Douglas Avenue, Fairville Boulevard, Main West, Manawaginish Church, Dever, Greenhead are all affected by the traffic at Sims Corner. Doesn't matter whether the Harbor Bridge is under construction or not. The current traffic at Sims Corner and the feeder roads is already heavily congested, significantly above what the JDI engineers presented a common council rezoning for the logistic park a few years ago. There was a study done by one of your city departments last June, and it showed that over a twenty-four-hour period, there was two-hundred-and-fifty-nine trucks entering and exiting the logistics park. The projection that was provided to council for that logistic park was the approximately eighty trucks in a twenty-four-hour period. We're talking three times the amount that was given to council by the JDI engineers. Again, we've got two traffic studies. The second traffic study, which was done by CBCL, that's presented to council, states clearly that the data was leveraged for the study at the discretion of IPP staff. So we need to take that all into consideration. The one-point-one billion dollar word is huge. Scares us all. Scares us all. What is a $1.1 billion? I haven't got a clue. I think I just heard that even after a $1.1 billion spend, that the increase in the assessment is only going to be 1.6 million. I'm not sure how that all works. If I was to build a house for $300,000, sell it for $350,000, it would probably be assessed at 400. So we all know that there's an issue with the city against the province and the industrial taxes, so we have to be sure that we know we're getting it, getting the best value for the buck, and the benefits to the city as an overall. I will also state that the new wastewater treatment plant, that it was built at a cost of roughly $160 million, was, and this was announced after it was approved, was provided a $100 million loan from the federal government to ensure that could be built. So all federal taxpayers are staked in that one project. Also, NV Southern Railroad has received from the National Trade Corridors Fund $21.2 million to upgrade the railroad, and there's been no money I have from that, I don't believe, to put into Sims Corner for this expansion that's coming forward. So that's pretty well it for me, other than if precedent is something a council, last year, this council rejected a daycare on Starburst Lane off of River Hill Drive on the west side due to traffic concerns. And if precedent is anything, Sims Corner's traffic concerns should be paramount in your decision-making. Last, as stated in the city's information, the project does not align with your policies, LU 125, LU 4, and the project provides no benefit to the city as a whole. So I thank you all, and good night. Any questions?
Yes.
Counselor Harris has one. He's online. He's online there. Go ahead, Counselor.
It's just a thank you to Mr. Ryan, you know, your worship. We have, we lack a lot of journalism in this day and age where there's just been a lot of loss on that level of local accountability and reporting, and Mr. Ryan's paying attention is something that, you know, we need at this table for residents. It's very important for residents to engage. Just want to thank Mr. Ryan for coming tonight and putting his points on the table in such a coherent and articulate way. So thank you for that.
All right, Mr. Ryan, I'll have to bid for you then. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the proposal. Come forward, give us your name and your address.
Make a little space here. I'm Brian Wilson. I live at 139 Ludlow Street. I see, good evening, Mayor Riordan, Deputy Mayor McKenzie, members of council. I see we have a special guest here, David Campbell, so we're going to hear how good the economics are. Let's just get my station here. So about NextGen, project community benefits, I've got five key points. Historical precedent and context, current proposals, scale and expectations, environmental and community impact, four, yeah, I keep thinking it's up there, but it's only me reading it here, four, good fences make good neighbors, and five, a call to action. One, historical context. There's a proven precedent for meaningful community benefits in St. John. In 2006, the Amera Pipeline Project, worth $350 million, showed up, and they provided 5.3 million in community benefits, equals about 1.5% of the project value. The benefits created a lasting improvements in Rockwood Park that residents still enjoy Point number two, current proposals, scale and expectations. Current benefits package doesn't match the project's scale. NextGen is a $1.1 billion industrial project. Using the 2006 Amera precedent of 1.5% community benefits should be at least $16 million. Current offering, primarily a pedestrian overpass that will mostly serve mill workers. Number three, environmental and community impact. Permanent changes to the neighborhood require proportional compensation. This project seeks to convert a public green space, Willistook Park, into corporate parking. The site has profound indigenous and settler cultural significance. We've lost the historic Sims Brush Factory. This facility will be a 140-megawatt facility that will convert wood chips to fuel. Compare Colson Coal Facility employs 97, sorry, 95 people, but produces seven times more power. So you can do the math on how many people might work at this boiler. Four, good fences make good neighbors. Working to maintain healthy relationships between neighbors. Willistook Park was a good example of being a good neighbor. City and JDI have discussed a district energy project. That's an example of trying to be a good neighbor. Port of St. John, Harbor Passage is one of the best examples we got of good neighbors and projects that are for community benefit. And the port is in the process of the Community Interface Beautification Program. So five, the call to action. Council must ensure billion-dollar projects deliver proportional community value. Reject the current proposal, require benefits package proportional to the project's scale, ensure lasting neighborhood value, not just corporate convenience, and balance economic growth with genuine community benefit. In closing, we're not saying no to industry, we're saying yes to responsible development that respects the host community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here this evening. See any questions for you? Excellent, thank you. Is there anyone else this evening who would like to speak? Okay. Oh, sorry, hang on there. Can I get you back down here, Mr. Wilson? Just for one second, Counselor Harris has a question. I didn't see his hand up over there, sorry.
Yeah, it's certainly, yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I apologize to everybody for being virtual tonight. I would love to be there in person. Mr. Wilson, Brian, can you tell me, you know, your position, you've done some work with the board level with the port around community action and community engagement. Can you tell me a little bit about what those conversations are like when you're having, when you're there and you're having conversations about what the impact is going to be on the port, and how the leadership of the port engaged with you as a resident, very close to the port, as well as this project, and what you're hoping for for the tone of this conversation?
Good question, tough one. Yeah, good example. Like I mentioned, the port knows it's growing, and the port knows that there's impact, and so that's why they're designing the Community Interface Beautification Program. It got delayed because of a very large fire, but that's in the works right now. Another really good example is when DP World came on board, it's been noted that a number of their ops managers, other executives, senior leadership, actually moved right into the neighborhood. So whatever happens down at their facility, they'll experience it because they live up the hill. Does that answer?
Absolutely, that's a good, that's a good point. Thanks, sir, just filling in those blanks.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you again. Okay, come on over, give us your name and address.
I'm Andy Mosher. Just to point out that I don't think I'm related to the lawyer for JDI, and I didn't speak to anybody on council or PAC prior. And you'll also note I'm wearing my own shirt. I'm not wearing green or tan, it doesn't have anybody's name on it. So I'm speaking on my own behalf, although I do expect that I'll wake up tomorrow morning with at least one less client because of speaking here this evening. I live in the 400 block of Douglas Avenue, and I didn't receive any PAC notices because I'm outside of the bounds, of course. But I will say when I purchased my home on Douglas Avenue, my partner and I did, we didn't have a high-tension wire in front of our home, and we bought it because it was between the plumes. So having moved back to Canada in 2009 with cancer, I wanted to ensure that I lived somewhere that was safe, and St. John seemed safe to me. Unfortunately, since the time that we've moved here, the AIM FIRE has proven to us that when we don't live harmoniously with the industry around us, and when we don't follow our own legislation and the plans that we had in place to ensure the safety of our people, we all lose. So the AIM FIRE taught me very quickly that unless we're careful as citizens and as legislators and lawmakers, that big changes can happen to the health of the people that live in the city. Living as I do on Douglas Avenue and being a person who survived, I have to walk every day, and I don't walk under the high-tension wires. So I use Willistook Park four or five days a week to go and walk there. And maybe I'm naive, maybe, probably, I'm naive because here I stand. I kind of thought that the Willistook Park was a beautiful gift that JDI was stewarding for the Willistook people. And as Skijin, it has very important connotations to me, the Willistook, and the name Willistook on the park meant something to me. And so these plans to pave paradise, well, I guess it's just going to be dirt paradise for this parking lot, were a little unsettling and a little worrisome to me. City staff did the most amazing job of talking about this application. I only have a couple points that I'd like to make in addition to what they said. I feel those wires could have been placed on Chesley Drive, and I feel that they weren't because of the Ervings, and yet here I stand. The Honorable Attorney, Mr. Mosher, isn't accurate in his assessment about the need for the parking lot. I've worked industrial construction for many centuries, it felt like, but it was only decades. And getting on the bus at the end of the day when I left an industrial site was a great part of my day. And having a beer on the bus, let's be honest, with my coworkers, was always a great part of it, too. So I don't see that as a reason for a parking lot on site. And I, too, drive Sims Corner every day and take my life into my own hands, and maybe it's part of being a St. Johner that you're supposed to do that, but I also don't think that we should make it worse. And the points that city staff has raised about the changes to Sims Corner that will be required, don't need me to repeat them, they're so much smarter than I am, but it is so true. In Beaumont, California in 1992, I spent $1.8 million to move 12 burrowing owls from a site that then became a refinery. That's a lot of money for a few owls, and we have a lot of human beings here that will be impacted. So I would just ask you, when you're deliberating this project, to think about all of the humans, not just those that are employed by the employer. The mill site itself is the perfect place for the NextGen project. It's only the use of the parking lot that is at issue for me. And under the laws of this land, the Willistook Park does belong to the applicant, and they can do whatever they wish to do with their private property as long as they can convince you, council, to agree that it's a great idea. But I would argue that the squirrel bought that land from a beaver for $2, and I'm sure I could ask any one of you to lend me $2, and we could maybe buy that land back and give it to the Wolostokway people, because there is no land for the Wolostokway people in St. John. And the Wabanaki people, who include all five of the tribes of the Wabanaki Confederacy, deserve to have some land as well, and this had their name on it, this had the name of the river on it. So I would encourage you to think about the message that you're sending when you make decisions about land that someone has been making bank on the name of the Willistook River on for the last, I can't do math fast, but 20-odd years, you guys. I'd also draw your attention to the text of Call 47 of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada's 94 Calls to Action. They were endorsed by the Crown Governments across Canada and endorsed by this city on March 22 of 2021. And as part of the conceptual framework that the city put into place, the city quoted Calls to Action 43, 47, 57, 75, and 77, and the text of Call 47 states, "The repudiation of concepts used to justify European sovereignty over indigenous peoples and lands, and the restructuring of legal governance and institutional structures in Canada to help recognize indigenous right and authority." And I would propose that this land, named after the Willistook, be repatriated to the Wabanaki peoples. Maybe I'm foolish. When I read cotton out of the toilet paper package, I actually think there might be cotton in it. I'm not going to lie to you, I am that naive sometimes. But I think that perhaps city council can't make that movement, but all those of us in this room, we can do it together if we get together and we work together and we consider what we owe to our ancestors, to all of our ancestors, both settler and indigenous. So I call for the land to be gifted to the Wolostokway people. If this park can disappear, if even half of this park can disappear, what about the Irving Nature Park? What percentage of our parklands can be taken back or taken from the people of the city if there's just a nice dirt parking lot to be built? The AIM FIRE taught us to live harmoniously with industry, and we want to and we need to, because jobs are important and people are important. And if we don't follow our own legislation, my fear is that we'll have another AIM FIRE and more cancer and more people who are ill and not living their best, most wonderful lives here in St. John. So my call to action is that we listen to city staff, who are well-paid to do a good job and who have done a good job, and we consider not allowing this to move forward.
Thank you, Andy Mosher. Eight and a half minutes, excellent. Thank you very much for being here this evening. I'll call ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the project. Come on down and give us your name and your address.
Is this thing on? Okay, I'm a bit nervous, I've never spoken to council before. My name is Amanda, and I live in the Lower West Side, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposal. In addition to many of the excellent points we've heard tonight, I'd like to present three reasons why I oppose this project. First, I'd like to say I think the applicant is being quite disingenuous about the benefits to the public with this proposal. The applicant has done several engagement efforts with the community about the benefits of this proposal for pedestrians and for the general public, but I find it to be pretty ironic that the applicant is telling the public what a wonderful park this will be once the land is no longer zoned as a park. It's a little weird to me that the applicant can only make improvements to the park that will benefit the public once the land is no longer zoned as a park. The applicant likes to tell everyone that 70% of the land will still remain as a park. However, anyone who's ever been to this park knows that virtually the entire amount of that 70% is very steep hillside area that is not usable to the public as a park. In this application, the current main park area that would be converted to parking lot is the area that would be converted to parking lot, and the unusable, steep hillside area is the area that would be left for the public to enjoy. And I would like to say if the applicant is so eager for the public to enjoy the benefits of an improved park infrastructure, they are free to make those improvements at any time they like with the current zoning. My second point is that this rezoning is not required for the NextGen project to proceed. I think that's really important we remember. We've heard the applicant repeatedly talk about the economic benefits of the NextGen project at PAC, on CBC, and in their public consultations. However, the potential economic benefits- However, the potential economic benefits of the Next Gen project are not reliant on this proposal today being approved. The Next Gen project will be proceeding whether or not tonight's proposal is approved. The applicants have said themselves that the purpose of rezoning this land is for a temporary parking lot, which will only be used pretty much for the duration of construction for the Next Gen project. A parking lot which is not necessary for the project since the project will be going ahead whether or not the proposal tonight is approved. My third point is the general commercial zoning designation is not limited to parking lots. Rezoning this parcel of land from park to general commercial, which is one of the options tonight, would allow the applicant to build their commercial parking lot. However, this zoning designation also allows many other uses, such as business offices and gas stations. And so I'd like council to consider what will happen to this piece of land once the Next Gen project is complete in 2028. And this temporary gravel parking lot is no longer needed for the temporary workers during the temporary construction phase. Once the parking lot is no longer needed in a couple of years, if this proposal is approved, the land will already be rezoned to general commercial. At that point, the applicant could use it for virtually any commercial use that they'd like, uses which may or may not align with the municipal plan. And they could do that without coming back to city council. And so is council prepared tonight for the applicant to build a high-rise or a gas station or any other commercial venture on this parcel of land in the very near future without coming back to council? And I have to say, I think this applicant has a track record of playing the long game with pieces of land locally for their own benefit, and we can't forget that. I want to mention as well that I read through the agenda for this evening, and I saw quite a lot of copy-and-paste form letters in support of this proposal that were all presumably provided to employees by the applicant to submit. The letters convey that temporary construction staff could not possibly take shuttle buses. It would be cruel and unusual if you were to believe these letters. But I want to note that none of the workers who submitted these letters will be using these shuttle buses, as this would only be for the temporary construction staff. As well, I want to reiterate, as city staff did tonight, that the applicant has the ability to build a parking garage on the existing mill site if they want to. And so I think if staff would prefer a parking garage is built instead of the shuttle bus option, I think staff need to take that up with their employer, the applicant, directly instead of coming to city council. And so in conclusion, I would urge council to reject this application in line with city staff recommendations. And I would also urge council not to approve one of the alternate options presented in the city staff presentation. I hope I have convinced you that this proposal does not present benefits to the public or to the community that warrant the creation of a brand-new special zoning designation just for this applicant and this piece of land. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, for being here this evening. Don't see any questions. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application. Okay. Get you to give us your name and your address.
Don't start the clock yet, please. We have slides. While Mark's helping me out, I'll introduce myself to those of you who don't know me. My name is Sarah Stasich. I'm a resident of Uptown. I used to live in Fundy Heights. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I'm also a business owner.
Okay, before we get started, I do need to take a vote, though, to go past 10. Thank you, councillor. Yeah. Can I get a second or from somebody who's not at home, maybe? Just joking. Okay. On the question? To go past 10? Are we good? All in favor? Opposed?
This one right here.
Okay, two opposed. Pushing carried.
Here you go. Should be queued up right here.
Yes, please. Okay, are you? Oh, no.
Okay, I guess we're ready to go.
Okay, all right, Sarah, over to you.
I'm going to try to breeze through this kind of quickly tonight, guys, because some of my points have already been made, so indulge me a little bit. We have talked very briefly about a loss of usable park land. I just want to comment on that one. I was at the PAC meeting. God love those of you who sat through it with me. Mr. Mosher, this is a quote from the PAC meeting, saying that he's applying for 30 to convert 30% of holistic park to parking. Staff have included in their presentation that that's not their assessment of the case. Various people have already presented to this effect as well. The usable park land that's going to be used up by this parking lot will be likely more than half. And the staff quote included in your presentation tonight is that the site will no longer function as a park. I think that's a pretty strong conclusion and pretty accurate, just in case anybody had any doubt. This is not advancing. So this is an image, the green is an image of the property, the black delineating the proposed parking lot, which is approximately 1/3 of the property. But when we look at the actual usable part of the park, I've used the red to sort of gray out that really steep hillside, which everybody knows, like, you don't let your kids play near it, you call them back when they get too close, you don't want to get too close to it. That's why we have our handy little man falling down off the side of the unstable hill. The actual usable piece of the park is going to be, like I said, less than half. I think this visual is just important to put in front of everybody so they get a clear idea of exactly what the reality of this is going to be. Rail traffic impact has been discussed, but I think this is a really, really important point. Depending on who you speak to, the port expansion is anticipated to be anywhere from four to six times the container traffic that they have currently. Those trains that are carrying those containers to and from the port location are going to be more frequent, and they're going to be a hell of a lot longer than they already are now. We're also going to have a massive associated increase in trucking traffic that's related to that increase in container traffic. So both of those issues were not included in any of the traffic studies that have been submitted by the applicant, and as your staff have said, could not be considered, which is part of the reason why they're recommending it be rejected. These are some quotes from Mr. Mosher during the PAC meeting, where he's talking about how he can't understand how Sims Corner is going to be affected, how traffic is going to be affected by this site. I'm suggesting that perhaps you should read his own traffic studies. These are quotes directly from the first traffic study that was attached to the environmental impact assessment. Increase in traffic volumes, increase in travel times, traffic delays or disruptions to accommodate wide loads. We haven't talked about that yet tonight. When large equipment needs to be transported through that area, the EIA has actually talked about the need for flaggers, police on-site, full stopping of traffic during those periods. Excuse me. They also determined there was potential for damage to road surfaces and associated infrastructure, translation, more cost to the city. Conflicts with active transportation routes. That's an understatement. An increase in traffic accidents. And let's remember, traffic accidents are not just vehicular collisions, they're collisions with pedestrians, with cyclists, with warm, fleshy, vulnerable meatbags, right? And that's what we're talking about as a potential impact of this parking lot. Traffic congestion, this is from the supplementary traffic impact study, again, talking about the impact of traffic due to this proposed parking lot. I won't go through the specifics. I'll just draw your attention to this visual where the red circles indicate intersections with a failing grade. As you can see, it's effectively every major access point to this entire area. The black question marks indicate areas where we just don't have any data because it wasn't included in the study. The two rail crossings, not included, and the main trucking routes through the area of Harding and Ready Street, not included. So we don't have enough information for you to make an informed decision. However, I think common sense tells us all it's probably going to be pretty bad. Again, summarizing cost-benefit to the community, a lot of folks have touched on this already tonight, so I'm going to breeze through it quickly, but my big thing is safety. We're going to see pedestrian and active transport collisions increase. We're going to see traffic collisions increase. Something that hasn't been discussed tonight, first responder access. How is an emergency first responder crew going to get through when there's an incredibly long train moving through the area? Or traffic is backed up because a wide load is being delivered to the site and everything's been put on pause? What benefits are we getting in exchange for these risks? A bus shelter, there's already one there. A staircase, there's already one there. And that's not a benefit to all of us because you have to be able-bodied and have full mobility to use it. A skywalk, also not accessible to everyone. A parent with a stroller can't use that. And a pocket park, let's not forget about the pocket park. Other costs to the community, loss of a rare urban green space. And it's rare, not just because of its location, but that view is spectacular. It's one of a kind in the community. We can't recreate that anywhere else. Increased congestion, we've talked about, traffic delays, and the infrastructure costs. So again, I've gone through it really quickly. I think you can all guess that what I'm asking for is that you reject this application completely, follow the recommendation of staff. They've done lots of due diligence on this, lots of hard work. In my mind, they're making an excellent recommendation. I just want to briefly touch on their other two alternative recommendations. Recommendation number three, the sum of those Section 59 conditions, they sound awesome. The problem is, long-term, the city has no way of enforcing those conditions. So if the applicant chooses to back out of those commitments in the future, short of taking them to court, you really have no way of making them do it. So that's something you consider if you're thinking about number three. Recommendation number two, please, for the love of God, don't think about that one. In my opinion, that's a precedent-setting option. If you start, if you create this special zone, then what's to prevent future developers to come to you and say, hey, I need parking for my project that's adjacent to Rockwood Park. How about I use this special zone to create a parking lot in Rockwood Park? Wouldn't that be great? Right? So please, let's just not even touch that one. So again, my opinion, my request to you, is to please just reject this proposal. And I want to leave you with one final thought. Excuse me, sorry, I'm getting over a cold. As I said when I introduced myself, I'm a business owner. When I need to hire staff, I don't come knocking at your door. It's up to me and my business to make my recruitment offering attractive and competitive, not you, not this city, okay? And this was summed up, your decision on this tonight, was summed up so beautifully by this mayor from Spain. My Spanish is terrible. I'm not going to insult him by trying to pronounce this properly. Their quote is lovely, though. It's not my duty as mayor to make sure you have a parking spot. For me, it's the same as if you bought a cow or a refrigerator and then asked me where you're going to put them. There are going to be lots of people coming up here tonight, talking to you folks about how important it is that a temporary workforce have access to convenient parking. That's not your problem. If this was my project, it would be my problem, not yours, not this community's. So please, keep that in mind when you make your decision. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. I'll ask again if there's anyone else who would like to speak against the proposal. I'll ask, okay, come on up, give us your name, and if you've got anything new to add, I'm just trying to speed it up.
Hi, my name is Balaj Loita. As so many, so many reasons have been already announced, I will be very short and only take one point. So I think with the parking lot introduced, we would be inducing traffic. So the intersection is already, as we've seen, overcrowded and with the future, with the prediction of even more traffic. So we should be, we should not incentivize people to drive to the plant. And even if GDI offers to build new infrastructure, build a nice roundabout, add some extra lanes, that might be, might come in handy now, but in the long term, that will just be more infrastructure for the city to maintain. So I would suggest as a call to action for the city to work with GDI to find alternative ways to bring people to the plant, because it's not the cars that need the job, but people of St. John.
All right, thank you. I was going to say, we didn't get your address, though, did we?
Oh, sorry, I live uptown Duke Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have been biking around.
Good, okay.
Don't drive.
All right, thank you. I don't see any questions. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the proposal. I'll ask if there's anyone who wants to speak against the proposal, and for the third and final time, if there's anyone who would like to speak against the proposal. All right, over to those who would like to speak in favor of the proposal. I'll just get you to come down. Okay?
My worship, members of council. My name is Brad Mitchell. I live on Canterbury Street, and I'm the chair of the Planning Advisory Committee. I asked to speak at some point this evening because I'm neither for or against this project. I just would like to clarify some of the things in regards to the PAC report and some of the things that have come up this evening. So if you are with me, and as you know, the planning advisory meeting last time went till after 11:00. So I'm aware that these things can drag on, and you're going to be dealing with the same thing.
Maybe what I can do is get you to speak last then, because I really would like to hear who would like to speak for the proposal versus, I mean, because we've got your, we've got the PAC report.
Well, it's not, I would like to clarify it, because it doesn't really, I don't think, captures what had happened at 11:15 on that night. But if you want me to wait, I'll...
Well, I, here's the, my only thing, is that we're at 10 o'clock, we have a hard stop at 11:00. My preference would be, since I do have the report, is to hear people who would like to speak. Thank you. People who'd like to speak in favor of it. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to get the people who are going to speak, sorry, the people who want, yeah, people who want to speak against, no, in favor. I need the in-favors up now.
Okay.
All right? And then I'll do you at the end, maybe. I just, I, like, I've already, we've all got your report, and I know maybe there are some things you want to clarify, but I haven't heard from, we haven't heard from this.
That's fair. But I would like to speak on it, because it's, and I know it's going to be late.
Yeah, it is. It's only going to 11:00. I think we've got a hard stop here.
Good evening. My name's Mark Mosher. I'm the vice president for JD Irving Forest Products, and I am a 30-year St. John resident. I live up in Jury Cove. And before we start, I would like to mention, I think one of the first comments you made was JD Irving and the Pro Kids. And I think JD Irving as a whole has been one of the very large supporters of Pro Kids. And one of the directors of Pro Kids actually works at the applicant mill, and I have given him a fairly large donation every year. So. So very quick overview of the project. I'm not going to go into it. I really want to get to some of the areas that have been brought up this evening, some of the things that were not, were asked at the Planning Advisory Committee that we have made some changes from that, so I'm not going to talk really about the project. It certainly has been talked about, this is the largest project in the forest products industry in 30-plus years. And it really is basically a fundamental, kind of a 50-year renewal of this. And it's, I won't go into that. And as terms of the economic impact, I want to really defer most of that. David Campbell, who did the economic study for our Next Gen project, that actually made a number of the comments that were in the Planning Advisory Committee, there was a lot of comments about how much the city was going to see of that and where the province would be. So David Campbell is here tonight, and we'll get an opportunity to come up and talk in support of that project. So I won't go through all this. But there is a number of comments that were brought up this evening, regards specifically of what I said or what people said I did not say. First thing, there was a comment earlier about how much this was going to change the assessment of the pulp mill. And I'm not sure what reference the number was, but currently, in 2025, the assessments for the five pids that make up the pulp mill proper, which is basically, because the pulp mill is divided into five separate pids, the mill, Sims Corner, a couple of ones in the woodyard, and the component of the tissue mill, the combined assessment today is just shy of $88 million. We have stated very emphatically that we believe that the assessment of this project in today's dollars would be no less than about $118 million at the conclusion of this project. So the assessment is actually expected to go up $30-plus million. So the assessment is actually expected to go up $30-plus million after the conclusion of this project. The other thing is that basically, we are getting ready to apply for building permits. We expect those will be somewhere in the 3/4 of a million dollar range. That will go right to the city on top of the $500,000 for the first few phases of this project that we have contributed to the city. So the reason I started in 2020, when we started this project that we're undertaking today, that was really the first phase of this project. So I took that as the starting point of this. So even during the construction period of what we've done today, the assessment that the pulp mill has gone up over $26 million. I do want to talk about the history, because there's a lot of conversations about what was the site history and what it wasn't. As everybody knows, this site was the, or this property was the site of Centra Care. In 1998, when actually, after Centra Care was shut down, the province actually came looking for tenders to purchase the property. The site, the, the conditions that came with that, which I'll show you in our purchase agreement, stated very clearly what the expectations from the province were. They needed somebody that was willing to buy it, remediate it, tear it down, which was significantly orders of magnitude more than the cost of the property, and then to convert it into something that would drive economic value in the city. Clearly, at that time, there was not a lot of takers. As a matter of fact, there was no takers, we weren't even one of them at the time. And we agreed ultimately to buy Woolestock Park in 1998 for $1 million from the province. And I really would like people to read this, because it's very clear what the expectations from the province were to the purchaser of the property. They said we would buy the property for $1 million. We would be responsible for all of the demolition, site remediation, cleanup of contaminated soil. We would convert it into green space that was to be used by the residents of the city of St. John until a suitable economic condition came forward for us to use that to drive the economy of the province. And if a $1.1 billion investment in the city is not a suitable economic condition, I don't know what is. And I'd also like to go back to the rationale of why we bought the property in 1998. We did not buy it for the purpose, sole purpose of converting it to a park for history. We just didn't. We bought it for a suitable economic use, because we had a large facility in the west side of the city, and we thought at that point it could be used in the future. So our contract with the province was that this would be used after a suitable period of time for an economic driver.
Mr. Mosher, I'm just going to remind you, holding everybody to pretty much 10 minutes, you're at 5:00 now, just to let you know.
Well, I would like to ask for additional, since the three people that come up at the start substantially longer than 10 minutes to say why it should be turned down. So I think I should be granted a few more minutes.
I held those, each of them to 10 minutes.
Okay. The other thing I want to talk about, everybody keeps talking about how there is space on-site for parking, and I wanted to say emphatically, I would welcome this whole committee to get on a bus with me and drive around the parking lot and look at where the parking spots are. Because today, even before we start this project, I am extremely short for parking, and we are not applying for a temporary parking spot, we're applying for a parking spot during the project that we can also use into the future. This is not a temporary application. I am balanced today. I'm going to basically take 250 of the 600 spaces that I have and remove when I start the construction. And then basically, I am short well over 500 parking spots when the construction project starts. And that's what I'm applying for, is to convert 500. I would also like to talk a little bit, I'm going to move ahead to one of the comments that was made about the area of the park that we're using. The black outline has been presented by a couple of the, both the city staff and residents. The black area is not the area of the parking lot. The actual area of the parking lot is smaller than the reference parking lot down in Lancaster. The area that I've shown in orange is actually the actual parking lot, the PID that we are looking at, read, of getting the zoning bylaw changed, is because of all of the tree buffers, the walkway, and the steep slopes. It's really just a convenience to change basically that PID, which is that section of the park. Again, our commitments to park, we are asking, and the other thing I would like to say is that the 30% is of the total usable area of the, or sorry, of the usable area of the park, we are actually taking 20% of the total park area, not one bit more, not one bit less. 30% of the usable area is not 50%. We've walked it many, many times because of the much smaller area of the parking lot. The actual area that we're converting is 30% of the usable, usable area. Again, as you know, we already maintain significant amounts of parks in the city. We have no intention to convert this thing to a high-rise building in the future. We are looking for an application. And I would ask that the council does the exact same, basically looks at this project the same as one of the first projects. This is a land-use project, it's not a traffic impact study project, but we will have somebody to come up to adjust some of the traffic impacts. And I would also like to talk about the fact that this park is used substantially today. We have the Christmas tree lighting in the park, we have a lot of track-and-field events. Nothing that we're doing with this application is going to change any of that, if it is approved. And then just very quickly, some of the feedback that we received at PAC, we're asking about paving. We have agreed that we will continue to extend the paving into the park by an additional 30 feet to make sure that none of the dirt is carried out. We're going to add additional lighting in the area. We have talked, there was a lot of talk about carpooling and bus passes. We are going to offer bus passes and subsidized bus passes for those who are willing to do it and carpooling. And we're going to add additional trees. We have agreed to basically a full wall of trees along Lancaster. Anyways, why this project is necessary, I'm not going to get into that, but the reality is, there is no space on-site for parking. This is the best use of it. This is a property that we bought with the expectation and the commitment and guarantee from the province that we would be able to use it when we so came to use it. Thank you.
I just want to check to make sure if there are any questions for you. I can't, I'll have to see if the other councillors are. Councillor Redwine, you had a question for Mr. Mosher?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, through you too, Mr. Mosher. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. So I mean, I just want to clarify, you said that this parking lot, if you're, if you get it approved to change into that, is going to be the economic driver, but you're already doing the project on your own property, so that's really driving the project, right? So the economic driver is not actually in Woolestock, like, you don't need that to drive the economy.
No, what I'm saying is, I need the parking lot, I'm pretty sure most people in this committee park, have a parking spot near work. I am asking to allow majority of people. I am asking this committee to approve such that my 500 contractors that are going to come on-site have a place to work that do not have to stand for a bus at the start of the shift and at the end of the shift.
And I, I had one other challenge with this, is since you're not planning on paving it, it's not accessible. So do you think it's okay to have a parking lot that's supposed to be available to the public that a wheelchair user, for example, can't use? Or a woman with a walker, for example?
Can I put my...
Or a family with a stroller?
Can I put the picture back up, please? So... This area here, we're not looking at paving. The area that the contractors, what we have applied for is to completely redo, have two separate entrances, one entrance for the contractors that would park in this area here. A completely separate entrance, there was always two entrances to Centra Care. We are going to reopen the second entrance, and we have agreed to put additional parking all the way along here, so, which have the best areas. That is in our application that we would upgrade, widen out some of the parking areas here, so that there is technically no reason that people come, that want to come and use the park for recreation purposes have to use this area if they want. Basically, today, the ring road goes all the way around here, the ring road in the future will basically skirt the outside of the parking lot.
You don't make your parking accessible for staff?
The parking for...
Like, any of your staff that would work there? Like, I don't know, I just, I'm a little confused by it, because...
No, we have accessible parking down on the mill site if people require accessibilities. If they do not, we are going to have some people that would be closest to the walkway as designated for that access.
And I understand that you need parking, what about a parking garage? I mean, you have tons of space, like, the, the paint factory was about a block long, right? So what about building up?
Well, that, but that, this is the paint factory right here. That is, so again, today, it's a large site. I have 600 people on a regular day that I need parking for. And that is balanced, that's what I tried to show in this site here. 600 parking spot, 600 people, 650 parking spots available across those two. This project takes out this completely, so I'm now left with 365. One of the recommendations was that we build a parking garage. Well, the only place to build a parking garage is actually on the site where my current, the only parking space that I have left. We've already gone out to tenders to look at the timeframe that we would have absolutely no parking on-site while we construct a parking spot.
I totally appreciate that now the timeline is hard, but you've been planning this for four years. That's what confuses me about all of that. So, anyway, I know there's other questions, but so, but I just wanted to mention that.
Councillor Harris had his hand up there on, online.
No.
No?
I'm okay, yeah.
Okay, Councillor Low then, over to you.
Mr. Mosher, hi. So at the end of five years, the parking lot you're proposing up in there, are you going to keep it? Or are you going to return it to green space?
Our request is to keep it.
See, what a lot of people feel, fear, is that everybody that now parks down on-site will end up parking up there, and something else will be built down on-site. So in other words, on the site you have there, it'll be enlarged, and it will, it will contain everybody that works at the mill. A lot of people think that, and I, you know, I know that they're only thinking that, right? But you and I both know that the urban people who do a great job when they do something are always 10 years in advance, like you've been doing this four or five years, correct? This, this didn't come out of your mind yesterday, you've been developing this for four or five years. So, I mean, if, if, if it was, if we knew it was going to be closed once the 500 trades people use it, or the employees in the mill use it, right? You know, it, it would create something different, right? But anyways, you're going to bring somebody to talk about traffic, the rail traffic and all that later on?
Yes.
Go to Willie for that, okay, thank you.
Councillor Redwine, you had another question?
I have one, but Joanna's got her hand up there.
Oh, okay, sorry, Councillor Killen, over to you.
Thank you, your worship, thank you, Mr. Mosher. I'm just wondering if you can speak to the job creation post, post the next five years, post-Next Gen? Because from what I understand, there's quite a bit of automation and technology that's going into this upgrade, so will there be more or less jobs on the other side of this? Like, I understand the need for the contractor spaces now, but will you ultimately need those spaces because you're increasing the workforce on the other side?
So the short answer is, the mill proper, the number of people that will come to work every day within the pulp mill, basically will be the same. The additional jobs is in the supply chain, because effectively, if we're going to increase the capacity of the output by 60%, it means the raw material coming in increases by 60%. So that is basically the wood harvesters, private woodlot owners, saw millers, and oh, by the way, Minister Heron sent me notes that I have to at least put a plug in for him, that he highly supports this project, so I got that in. But that, but that is really where the economic benefits of this project come in, are in the supply chain.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Redwine, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Most important question, do you know if people are buried on the site? And if this project goes ahead, will you be checking?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Do you know if there are people that are buried on the site? And if the project goes ahead, will you be checking that?
So if you go back, can I bring up my screen once again? If you go back to when it was Centra Care, when we demolished that site, it went down a long ways. There was a lot of, there was a, a lot of bricks in there, and one of our requirements that was in that is that we had to look for and return any artifacts to the New Brunswick Museum, and there was none that we found.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Mosher, I'm puzzled, because I'm thinking, I mean, I've got some union background in me, and if this was something that we've known about for four years, I would be in the position to say, you know what, we'll take a temporary move of these cars for 13 months or 12 months while you build a six-story car garage, you know? But be darned if I'm going to have my people parking across the street, walking 300, 400, 500 yards, whatever it is, in all kinds of weather, when today I can park on-site. So we'll take the short-term pain for the long-term gain. That's where my mind would have been, but I, I mean, I can't speak for anybody else. But I guess, at the end of the day, I was looking at what you said about the tax assessments and everything, and they've really gone down over the years, not up. I mean, and everybody is confused about that. But I'll give you an example, in 2013, the combined assessments of both your mills, the east side and the west side, was approximately $115 million. Approximately $55 million for the pulp mill, and paper mill at $60 million for the bayside paper mill. In 2014, both mill properties were reassessed, and the combined property assessments were reduced to approximately $58 million. That's $28 million for the pulp and paper mill, and $30 million for the bayside mill. So when we talk about the value going up and the tax assessment being good for the government and everything, I'm not really seeing that in history. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because you did mention it. But, you know, going back to, going back to the traveling thing, like, I've, I've been around the block, and I, I know IBW workers, for example, that traveled to the Sussex Potash Mine, got on a bus and went to work. And I can tell you, they didn't stand out in the cold waiting for the bus. The bus was there waiting for them, you know? So I mean, it is a doable exercise, and I don't understand why some people think that the only way we can do this is to park in the Woolestock Park. So if you can explain that to me, I'd, I'd be happy.
Well, I think I heard at least three questions in there, so I'd like to address all three of them if I could. Again, I'd like to have my presentation put back on. I glossed over this because I thought it had already been spoken. So, and I'm going to talk specifically about the pulp mill, not about the paper mill assessment, because that's a different story that we could spend hours on. But the pulp mill that we have today, we did appeal that, because every other pulp mill of the size that we operate is either shut down, similar to the one down in Picto, Nova Scotia, or it's in, close to being shut down. Very few mills of our size have survived the last downturn. And if we came to a situation where if we don't do this major capital upgrade, we would not survive the next one. And so at that time, pulp mills were being sold for the value of scrap. Many of them around the country were being shut down and sold for the value of scrap, which isn't very much. So yes, at that specific time, pulp mills weren't much, worth much, we appealed it from an economic standpoint, and that's why the assessment went down. We are now on a path to regenerate the pulp mill back to something that is globally competitive. That is, again, I showed you the property tax assessments going forward. Again, so at the end of the day, big, big impact there. The second one, you said we were on this for four years. We've been on a path of modernization for four years, and we'll be on it for another five years. We did not sit down and do the entire site layout of the entire project, because where the pulp mill is built, it's on basically a peninsula, it's a very logistically challenging site. We add one piece, take another out, add one piece. So if anybody's been watching the pulp mill, there's as much demolition as there is renewal. And because of that, we did one piece at a time, so we have not been doing the engineering on this project for four years. As a matter of fact, we started that no more than two years ago. We looked at individual pieces that we have been going through, and when we finished a piece, then we looked at others. So to say that we've been looking at this four years and we should have known about this is not correct. So to say that we've been looking at this four years and we should have known about this is not correct at all. And then the third one on the busing. Today, we bus. Whenever I have a major shutdown at the pulp mill today, we bring in six, seven, 800 contractors. And the logistics, and I don't know how many potash was. I know when they, when they shut down, I heard a substantial number of them. So I know there wasn't anywhere near the number of people on a daily basis taking buses. But the logistics of trying to have buses that carry 40 people, shuttle four to five to 600 contractors, requires either 15 buses so that nobody has to wait, or at least five or six, which is what we do today. We basically rent just about every one of the OmniM buses that do the cruise ships when we have a major shutdown today. And that is a significant challenge to try to manage that for a five-year construction project. We're basically being told from the construction standpoint that that is just not acceptable because of sheer volume of people. So I hope, I hope I answered it.
All right, that's it for questions. I have one really quick one. You say you bought the land 25 years ago, whatever it was, for a million dollars. What was the investment to take the building down?
Well, over two and a half.
Two and a half million?
Yep. It wasn't just the building being removed. It was, there was a lot of asbestos, there was a lot of lead paint, there was a lot of contaminated soil. So, and then have to clearly to remediate it, to put it back into a green space.
What's its assessed value today? Do you have any idea?
I didn't look at the assessed value.
I heard it's less than a million. I just wanted to get that confirmed. And then I'll, we'll need to find out.
Again, it's something that we've given, basically allowed the city to use for the last 26 years.
All right, it looks like that's it for questions. So I'll ask for the, thank you, ask for the next speaker to come forward.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Just hold on one second. I got to reset my time. Just to be clear, uh, from when Mr. Mosher started to when he finished. And yes, we had the questions, but to make sure this was fulsome, it's 24, 25 minutes. So, um, so hopefully we've hit a lot of those high points, but I'll turn that over to you and you can.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, we'll edit down based on a lot of the things that have been covered this evening. Um, my name is Jennifer Brown. I'm a senior planner and associate with Dillon Consulting. I'm joined by PJ Shea, a senior engineer with CBCL, who will, in the middle of this presentation, address some of the traffic concerns. Um, what we're, um, what we're here looking for this evening has already been covered in great detail. Um, what Mark Mosher kind of alluded to here is the displacement of two major parking lots. Um, so an additional 400 to 500 parking stalls are needed to accommodate that influx of folks as well as the, the future mill shutdowns. So the application doesn't just include, obviously, a request for the parking lot. It also includes substantial upgrades. I just want to focus here on some of the numbers with respect to Woolistook Park. So Woolistook Park is approximately 17.5 acres in total with 12.5 acres of usable area considering the sloping conditions of the site. The application reduces the usable park area to just under nine acres. That's the 30% reduction. So when we're looking at their reduce, the, the usable space, we've always been looking at what the community amenity space will be maintained as. The parking stalls themselves were designed to be approximately one foot wider than the, the bylaw minimum. Um, this is to accommodate, obviously, the larger contractor vehicles. The parking area will tie into stormwater that exists on Riverview Avenue West. And importantly, this, there are a series of enhancements here that look at resident come from, I should say, resident feedback as well as how the park is being used now. There is a lot of criticism about the existing bus stop that's sign-on pole on Bridge Street. The proposal looks at providing a covered bus, uh, bus stop as well as, um, a sidewalk that goes from, um, a new staircase down from Woolistook Park onto Bridge Street, that new sidewalk to continue down to Riverview Avenue West. It also proposes to upgrade the staircase to the lower field to enhance the usability for the local schools and the St. John Track and Field Association that are currently the ones using this space. We're looking to formalize the perimeter trails, so this will enhance public use with respect to kind of having a circular track around the park. It's currently used, there's a kind of unofficial trail used there now by the St. John Track and Field Association for cross and cross-country, uh, training. Um, we're looking to provide trail markers to ensure they know it's a 1-kilometer trail, multigravel around that, that trail system that's there now. Mark mentioned there's a tree line along Lancaster, along Lancaster Avenue. There are gaps in that tree line. The proposal includes infill of those gaps along Lancaster Avenue. There's an underutilized corner of the park, and I think there's been some commentary around using this area as a pocket park. I think it's important to note that there's plans to extend Harbor Passage up Riverview Avenue West. What we're proposing here is that in combination with that, we can enhance this corner, use it as a pocket park, and use it as a way to provide animation at the corner and pull people into the enhanced Woolistook Park area and allow them to, um, use that trail system that's being formalized through the application. A landscape area is also proposed because, again, we're trying to maintain the look and feel of Woolistook Park. There's also the relocation of, uh, the existing statues in the park, many of which are under, uh, they need a lot of repair. Um, some of them, um, are unusable. But right now, the commitment here through this application is to refurbish and relocate more centrally to create a dedicated statuary. Finally, there is a staircase that's proposed to connect from, uh, the park down to Riverview Avenue West. This, again, provides future enhanced connection from the park down to your future plans around Harbor Passage. PJ?
Thank you. I'd like to take this time to address some of the concerns that we've seen over this process of the application, the PAC meeting, and also here tonight regarding the traffic. So there's been a lot of talk, the first topic is a lot of topic or talk regarding the comparison of the onsite versus offsite parking. It is true, there's been two separate traffic studies that were conducted by two independent engineering firms. And the first study was conducted for the EIA study and assumed that all additional contractors are parking on site, which represents the city's option of onsite parking garage. So this was examined throughout this process. And then the second supplement study that our firm provided for JDI and conducted was a comparison, supplement traffic report, that looked at that same additional 500 contractors that are coming to the NextGen project, simply moving from one site of Bridge Road to the other side in the Woolistook Park. Now, both studies conducted, um, showed that the, the impacts were within acceptable limits within the neighboring intersections around the mill, including Sims Corner. And then in addition to that conclusion, when we compare the two different options, the offsite parking in Woolistook parking lot actually does not worsen the Sims Corner traffic congestion. While both these studies had the same results for Sims Corner, the offsite parking, due to dispersion of parking of between mills and mill employees and contractors, actually improves the overall intersections in this area. And then the second topic I want to talk about is the source of the traffic data. So the original traffic study was performed in 2022 by Englobe, and all traffic counts provided or collected was by that firm in October 2022. In addition to this baseline traffic counts, a 1% year-over-year growth was added to that baseline, including the workforce projection numbers for the NextGen project. Now, to provide some perspective on the overall traffic volumes experienced at Sims Corner specifically, that same reporter also noticed with a controlled intersection count that during Harbor's, Harbor Bridge construction and lane closures, over 30% of traffic and 700 vehicles will be reduced by the time Woolistook Park parking lot is in operation. And that construction schedule will be complete this year and no more lane closures on Route 1, according to the Harbor Bridge construction schedule. And one couple, one new additional topic I wanted to address too that came up this evening was concentration versus dispersion of this traffic going to the mill. There currently is four connections, including that Gifford Road back entrance off to Milford Road that was addressed this evening. Those options are still there in this option of moving the contractors. Because there's more than just the contractors going to the site, it's also the employees as well. The... So that, the actual dispersion of this traffic flow and the contractors in the parking is actually greater because now we've added an additional entrance and exit to the Woolistook Park parking lot. And then last is the impact and the timeline of this peak volumes is still remaining the same in both scenarios. This application today is only to move that same additional 500 contractors to the other side of Bridge Road. And then we've got a couple of slides here to showcase the summary of our two compared analysis of scenarios, if you will. This first scenario shows the results from the first EIA traffic study with the individual lanes and the average wait times during the afternoon peak rush hour experienced in the peak construction timeline of the 2027 NextGen project. For comparisons and apple, apples comparisons, this slide here actually shows that same 500 moving over to Woolistook and the Sims Corner level of service remains the same, while the remaining intersections actually improve in overall traffic, um, consideration. And the supplement study also did not address the additional intersections that were addressed in the original traffic study. There was 14 total intersections examined in the original one. The supplement only addressed the intersections that changed. So that, the findings from the original one still apply in the second traffic study, so.
Jennifer?
Thanks, PJ. Just in summary here, the application's requesting that special zone for the 500, uh, parking lot, uh, parking stall. I stutter a lot when I'm tired, folks. Um, so we're looking for 500 stalls in Woolistook Park. We're also looking to, uh, the applicant's looking to invest approximately $2 million, in upgrading Woolistook Park in relation to this application. Given the land was purchased with an agreement to keep the land as green space until a suitable economic development opportunity came forward, the request for a portion of the land to be used to support NextGen represents a reasonable compromise. After maintaining the park for the last 20 years, uh, JDI is here today committing to significant enhancements to support the continuation of the park. What's being requested is truly a balance of economic growth and community benefit. The community's planning, the community, the city's planning documents are not quite equipped to address the application directly, and you heard that from planning staff. There's a series of compromises we're asking for this evening. The application is requesting that council allow a parking lot in a park, something that you're used to doing and is common throughout your larger parks throughout the city. Approving the application as requested allows for greater flexibility in the future should parking demands change post-construction. Now, just a final point. The applicant has shown they're committed to working as, in their role as a stakeholder. They're at the table discussing Sims Corner and have consistently been doing so and showing up at these working groups. They're also willing to commit this evening to reevaluating the parking need post-construction. So I know Mr. Mosher had said they're looking for a permanent asset, and they are. However, there is an opportunity here to reevaluate post-construction and once the first mill shutdown is undertaken. The application's requesting exemption from the commercial-style parking lot standard. Um, the community was really quite vocal in its criticism of paving. Paving and curbing reduces the future flexibility on the site and requires a larger area to accommodate that number of parking spaces. Reevaluation of the parking need becomes increasingly difficult if we pave that site.
Jen, I've got you at 11 minutes. Are we good?
I'm, my final two sentences, uh, Mayor. There's concern that, obviously, from staff reporting that this indicates that they're going to be resistant to any type of change. I think what we're looking at here this evening is really requesting the council consider the ask of the application and how it represents a reasonable compromise in a set of very challenging circumstances. Just to reiterate, there is no doubt in our mind that this is a very complex and unique scenario that we are trying to find a collaborative solution to push a very important investment forward. So I thank you for your time. PJ and I are happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan?
Thanks, Your Worship. Jen, I'm glad you mentioned the committed to reviewing the parking after the mill shutdown because that's new information that we hadn't heard before. What would you see is the difference between a commitment that, that's good, it, it's a commitment, but if we don't put it into something legal, then it could change versus, uh, some form of temporary use for the mill shutdown and then a reapplication for something different at the end? Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I, I think I, I'm getting where you're going, uh, Counselor, through, through Your Worship to the Counselor. So when I spoke of the, the planning framework kind of having a challenge addressing this application, temporary use, as you know from being on PAC, you've got one year and you can renew for another year if there's a rezoning application in place. We know we need this parking for four to five years, plus that post-construction mill shutdown. There is no mechanism really straightforward through the Community Planning Act to allow for it to be temporary in the truest form. However, through conditions, perhaps, you can look at requesting that reevaluation, but then it becomes an enforcement issue. Um, however, I think that there is kind of the, there's a, a bit of kind of trust that has been established through establishing this park and maintaining this park so that it would, it would be reasonable to ask the applicant to come back to the table after construction. Um, you can do so through Section 59 condition, or you can do through, do so through an agreement. Yeah, oh, Section 103, I believe, the agreement.
Thank you.
Deputy?
Thank you, Your Worship. Jennifer, just for clarification, did I just hear you say that we need this park to make that $1.1 billion project happen? Is that what you said?
I'm not at liberty to say that in any way. That's not what I said.
You said something that I interpreted what you said to be that. That's not what you meant.
So I think that, that, that will definitely require, and I think the, the JDO folks are much better equipped to answer this in detail than I will. But I will say that in conversations, there's going to have to be serious reevaluation as to how the timeline of the project rolls out, how the project is managed, if this application is turned down.
Okay.
Counselor Low?
Sims Corner, like, when you do the traffic stuff, do you look at the choo-choo trains that are going by there with the containers on the top?
The, the two reports do not address the traffic, or sorry, the rail traffic. The, the rail traffic is a different entity than the, the traffic in the sense that it's a different proponent that's controlling that traffic. And to fully understand the, the, the impact and the future schedule, that's better addressed by the, the port and the users of the rail.
But for instance, as an example, I was going over there the other day. I was going down Marketplace and I missed the, the bridges. And then when I got to Sims Corner, the red lights were flashing. So I decided to pull in back of the, there's a bowling alley there.
Yes.
And I was doing a clock on my car, so it might not be accurate. So it was eight minutes, give or take, right?
Yes, correct.
And when I left that parking lot, I went the other way. I went towards Sims Corner. And I couldn't see, Main Street was beyond, the cars were backed up. And the cars were backed up going straight. I got in the inside lane and went around, and they were on, on the reversing falls. So it's shift work in this parking lot. It's not 500 in, 500 out, there's different times and different, like, 10-hour shifts and all that. I read it, right? So if those cars are coming out of there and the trains are going by because now there's so many containers coming out of the port, you, you don't think that creates a traffic problem?
That traffic problem exists regardless of this application happens or not. That, that problem is a rail issue. And depending, regardless of the amount of traffic in Sims Corner, that rail stops Sims Corner's traffic.
But I'm saying that the addition of the cars in the parking lots because of different shifts. It would definitely affect Sims Corner, did the other morning when I sat there.
Well, when the rail goes through Sims Corner is impassable due to the rail crossings.
Say that again.
The Sims Corner, you can't pass through Sims Corner when the rail is going through the at-grade crossing, so it's impassable.
No, you'd have to go over it. Yeah, I know, but that's what I'm thinking.
Regardless of what happens in this application, that is still the issue. There's, that issue still exists. The additional contractors bringing to the, come to the site isn't.
And what I'm saying, that the amount of cars and the shift work, it would affect the traffic at Sims Corner. You're telling me it doesn't?
When compared to the option of onsite parking, the two options have the same effect at Sims Corner. When you compare the two apples to apples, the two options of parking either onsite or offsite, the level of service experienced at, at Sims Corner is the same.
You're saying it doesn't matter how many trains go by, how many containers go by, no matter where you're parking, it's the same problem?
The, the traffic studies and the data.
The problem's the same, right?
That's the same.
The problem. The problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Counselor Darling, over to you.
Perfect, thank you, Your Worship. I just want to clarify, just to kind of follow up on Jerry's question. Did you look at the train data and it didn't make a difference with the addition of cars, or was the train data not included at all?
Train data was not included in our supplement study, I can't comment the, all the data that's not represented in the traffic study presented to us from Englobe. The rail, we, we looked at the option that that 500 cars is common regardless for this project, those 500 contractors, and we looked at the impact, the comparative impact of one site versus the other site. And the rail is the same for both scenarios.
But how, I guess how can we, as a council, measure that actual impact without having looked at that at all? Because how can we know the increase in cars isn't going to stop that up even more?
Well, in addition to that, too, when this project and NextGen is operational and the contractors are using this site, Harbor Bridge is supposed to be closed, so there's an overall net decrease in what we're experiencing today for traffic in Sims Corner. Sims Corner is large, a lot larger impact by the Harbor Bridge construction than it is this NextGen project.
And how was that measured?
That was measured by a controlled intersection in the original traffic study. So, the traffic study in October of 2022, Harbor Bridge was down to two lanes. That same year, the engineering firm had a traffic count done for a separate project of a controlled intersection in both studies. So they were able to determine the net difference due to the Harbor Bridge with the same data from, collected from the same year.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Redwine?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, so you're basing your base numbers based on COVID times, right?
We don't believe we are. The base numbers, all the data collected was October 2022, two years after COVID shutdown was initiated. In our experience, that we don't, we feel less accurate, acceptable representation of the traffic.
Interesting.
I'm gonna have to interrupt us for a second here, because we have to decide what we're doing tonight. Are we lifting the procedural bylaw?
Motion to lift procedural bylaws, Your Worship.
I've got a motion to lift it, I got a second to lift it, to go another hour, to finish, to finish this off. Counselor Sullivan?
I'd just, I'd like to hear from either the clerk or solicitor, because when you read the bylaw, it's...
I hear you.
I like the formality of it, because it says, "The clerk shall rise," and...
Could you get up and stand up there, John?
Say to everybody, "Good night."
Okay, John. Over to you, clerk.
So, Your Worship, that is true, it does, it does state that the clerk shall rise at 11:00 PM to declare the meeting adjourned and notify of the, when, when it's going to continue. However, there is a provision in the bylaw where the procedural bylaw can be suspended one time, so council could decide to suspend that, that particular provision in the bylaw and go beyond 11, but it states it requires two-thirds consent of council, and two-thirds of council would be eight members. So it would take eight members to vote to go beyond 11.
Okay.
What are we doing next, huh?
So, we have a motion on the floor. I have a, I have a second, yes, I have a second.
The motion is to go beyond 11?
Yes, it is.
Suspend the procedural bylaw and go beyond 11. Okay, are we ready? I'll call the questions. Call it to Eva. One, two, three, four, five. What do we need?
And what, who are the nays?
Counselor Ogden. Okay, on the, on the nays?
Three.
Nays? The, the issue, of course, is that we'll be suspended, and then we're, it'll be two weeks before we can finish it up. Is the, you know, so it's...
Two hours?
I did, well, next Monday is a holiday, and then we, we're going to be doing the, the, yeah, you've got, I've got something booked with us that I think that related to your motion.
I agree.
I hear you.
I'm wishing. What are we looking at, how long, if we suspend it, we're here till whenever, whenever would be, or at least, at least time to make the decision.
We, I could, I could ask how many additional speakers that we have up in the audience there, will we calculate our time? Because we don't want to be here till one or two, I agree.
We'll have five.
Five speakers, will we, will we do five minutes? Five of each, instead of 10 minutes? That's...
Well, we don't have to have 10, yes.
Okay, oh, he's...
We never vote?
No, we, no, I didn't call the nays.
Is it seven, eight?
I didn't call the nays. Oh, in favor ahead, okay, nay, who's the nays? One, two, three, four? Okay. So, it's over for, it's over for two weeks. Yeah, you've got five minutes to finish this speaker up, and then the clerk's gonna stand up and say, "Good night," apparently.
Just, am I allowed to ask a question of procedural clarity, very quickly? So, if the, if we're suspended this evening, is it the public hearing that's suspended, and then the speakers are invited back?
The speakers will be invited back, exactly.
But invited back in objection and also in favor? Or are we picking up where we left off?
No, we would be picking up where we left off, so we'd get the five names of the speakers, and then we know that what we're gonna do. And then, with that, it's just that, between now and then, none of us can talk to anybody about it.
Perfect. Thank you, Your Worship, for the clarification. I know that Counselor Redwine had asked a question, and PJ was in the middle of answering that question. I'm not sure if the lines continue.
Yeah, 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 because he's, he's gonna stand up at 11.
Yeah. So, in addition to what I was saying earlier, our draft report, with permission from JDI, was issued to the city for review and comments, so any of the rail and the COVID-19 data was not flagged as a concern from the city's staff as well. So I'd like to make that clear.
Okay, Counselor Stewart, can you squeeze your question in?
Yeah, so, we're all struggling with Sims Corner here, it's obvious. And I have been part of this council for four years, I've heard our traffic engineers tell us about study after study after study after study. I'm a realist, I live in this city, and I travel through Sims Corner every day, multiple times per day, different times. There's no way that you're going to put 500 more vehicles at any time of the day, and it's not going to interfere with that, with that Sims Corner. I, I'm not gonna get past that, I don't know that we're gonna be able to figure that out, which is why I'm okay with leaving this tonight and picking it up in two weeks, but I'm gonna have a hard time getting past that. Go ahead.
Am I allowed to, okay. Through you, Your Worship, to the counselor, it's 500 cars, just, I, I know it's late, so I'm just gonna provide clarity in my brain, it's not 500 cars at once.
Yes.
Right? So it's, and I think that when we look at the overall volume of cars going through Sims Corner, if we look at 500 additional cars, peak, so peak construction, that's when all the puzzle pieces are moving, all the gears are moving at once, and, you know, that's a, that's worst-case scenario. If we look on the average, we're looking at throughout the day, these numbers, it'll, really, it's a drop in the bucket when we look at overall Sims Corner in the, like, from operating hours, they're looking at 24-hour shifts at certain times, so we're talking about 500 cars dispersed over the course of 24 hours in some cases, peak.
So, that's not talking about the trains, and they're getting longer, and that's not talking about the trucks, which is going to be more of them. I have to live there, I have to drive through that traffic circle all the time, so that, I understand, we could stagger that out, we could break it down over a 24-hour period and say it's only gonna be three cars here, three cars there, but when that, those trains are getting longer, and those, the truck traffic is getting heavier, it's affecting the people on the west side, their quality of life, they're waiting longer.
Yes. So, through you, Your Worship, just for clarity's sake, I think that there is, there has been and continues to be a commitment from the applicant to, to be a stakeholder, they're a very active stakeholder in this conversation around Sims Corner. I understand that there's an application before you that will have impacts on Sims Corner. However, beyond this application, there's still problems to solve, and I think that that continues to be the struggle, but what we're looking at is a fair, balanced response from council that looks at the future of Sims Corner and the participation of the applicant through the future of Sims Corner, regardless of NextGen, regardless of Woolstock Park, they still need to be at the table, they still need to contribute.
11 o'clock, Your Worship.
11 o'clock, okay. John?
Your Worship, it's now 11 o'clock, and so any unfinished business will be carried forward for two weeks, so that would be on February 24th, and the public hearing would continue at 6:30.
Okay, so we'll need to get the names of the, of the speakers who want us, would like to speak before we leave, and no one can, no counselors can discuss anything with JDI with the project, no, they can't go, we have to do this, have to keep the integrity of this process, so we have to be good at that. And before we wrap it up, I want to say, "Good night," and, and thank you to Mark Reed. Mark, this was quite the, this was quite the item that you're going out on. Wish you all the best in your new career. Thank you, Counselor Lo.